Test Bill, can you hear us? Joyce?
Yep, now we can hear you.
All right.
Can we hear them?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we will call the meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it belongs, is standing in the nation, 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 clerk, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Morissette?
Here.
Alms?
Here.
Dazeo?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Atkins Hoggit?
Here.
And Hall?
Here.
Excellent. All right, first thing we have are a couple presentations. The first one is recognition of John Potter and his retirement from the PIPs. Aaron?
Sorry, is anybody there? Just checking. I think somebody was supposed to maybe come, but just wanted to make sure nobody did before I do.
Can't hear you very well, Aaron.
Okay, did anybody come from the PIPs to talk about this at all? I just want to make sure if somebody's not there that wanted to do this.
Is anyone here?
Is anybody out here for John Potter?
I'll check.
Is anyone out here for John Potter?
It's crazy.
No, Aaron.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I don't want to step on anybody's toes. Am I coming through better? Aye.
They're not working, I don't think.
They need to be turned up.
I don't... Okay.
Oh.
Um, all right, is this a little better? Can you hear me now?
Not really.
That's worse for me.
That's...
That was better, at least? Okay, so we have a proclamation for John H. Potter, and I'll read it. Through the years, most of the citizens of the city of Hudson have enjoyed the wonderful entertainment at the PIP Center for the Arts. Located in the beautiful shores of the St. Croix River, the PIP is a powerful magnet attracting, performing, and visual artists and audiences from the St. Croix Valley and beyond to the heart of our community. John Potter has served as executive director of the PIP for 35 years, from 1985 to 2020. During that time, the PIP Center produced 285 plays, presented over 580 concerts, and mounted more than 350 exhibitions. John also directed 28 plays, 24 of them for the Children's Theater, igniting in our youth an appreciation for theater and self-confidence that only the stage can generate. With the success of a capital campaign, John doubled the size of the PIP Center to include a second theater, seven galleries, a music studio, a dance studio, and a scene shop. He has built a small team of talented and dedicated staff and an army of equally dedicated volunteers. John Potter brings out the creative spirit in this little town of Hudson, Wisconsin, and has ensured that all forms of art will flourish in our community. John Potter's influence has extended to many other organizations in our community. He was a founding director of the River Valley Arts Council, now Art Reach St. Croix. Mr. Potter has served as chairman of our own Hudson area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and president of the Rotary Club of Hudson. John served on the University of Wisconsin River Falls Chancellors Advisory Council, and on the Executive Committee of the Wisconsin Arts Forum. In gratitude for his distinguished accomplishment and his lifelong commitment to the PIP Center for the Arts, it's altogether fitting that Mayor Richard O'Connor of the City of Hudson, Wisconsin, proclaim this day, September 13, 2020, as John Potter Day.
Thank you, Aaron. And congratulations, John. Hopefully you're watching, tuning in tonight. You had a great illustrious career, and we really appreciate everything you've done for the city of Hudson, as well as the PIPs. So congratulations on your retirement. Next up, we have the library presentation on the proposed budget to our funding partners. Shelley?
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for hosting me, and I believe President Paul Burem is there in person.
Yes.
I do have a short PowerPoint. If you would like me to do a share screen, or if that's not possible or convenient, since you have a full house, I can do a verbal report as well. What's your preference?
Uh, I'm not sure that we would all be able to see it. I mean, I would say try the PowerPoint.
Okay. Oh, we don't have screen sharing enabled.
Okay.
All right. Okay, um, if Paul would be near the podium, he can also take any questions. I will say I really appreciated the opportunity to talk to you earlier in the summer about the programs and services we were able to provide during the pandemic. The one update I would have for you is we've started a bin delivery service to senior living centers. So they let us know if they would like some reading materials. We pack up bins of books for them, bring them to the center. They quarantine the materials for a few days. We leave them there. We leave them there for a couple of weeks, pick them up, and bring them new reading materials when they're ready. That has been hugely popular, and we hope to grow that to other congregant living centers. Some of our seniors especially are just not ready to come back to the building yet, but we still want to serve them. We do have some numbers I'd like to report as well. Curbside appointments since mid-April, we have had 3,109 appointments, people coming to do a contactless pickup of materials that they ordered from us online or over the phone or via email. And as you know, we are open from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. beginning July 6. We have a capacity limit of 15, 1-5 people in the building at a time. And since we opened on the 6th, we've had 5,171 visitors. So the average is 125 people a day. We're really happy about that. I think the community really wants to get back into the building. We're seeing that in the numbers. And we often have a waiting, a line waiting outside the building. So the budget scenario that we're looking at this year, some of our challenges here at the library have had to do with retention, losing about 16 staff people, including our director, over a two-year period, and dealing with some pretty competitive wages from libraries in the region that are paying double and even triple what our librarians are earning. You know now, I'm sure, that the county has decided to fund us at 70% instead of 100%. And we are also dealing with the same uncertainties a lot of local governments are. We're not certain at this point what amount or degree of federal funding we'll get for our COVID expenses related to the funding partners, and that's budgets and proposals and things that still have to be worked out. So as we look to head to 2021, our board has adopted a budget, subject to revisions, of $915,000. This is a 1.3% increase over the previous year. We are using money from our unrestricted funds, or the reserves, of $73,000. So what we're asking our funding partners to do is to consider a 2% increase for us. For the city of Hudson, that would be about $7,000 over the previous year. That's 2%. So it would go from 357,221 to 364,000, 365. We've talked either to the representatives of the other funding units, or I did have a chance to appear at the Village of North Hudson last week, and we have tentative agreements for 2% from the Town of St. Joe, the Town of Hudson, and the Village of North Hudson, all dependent, of course, on as the numbers come in, those uncertainties begin to be resolved, they may have to make changes. And so we're aware that that could happen this year. We, I do also want you to know that the board had committed publicly to spending down some of our reserves, and we have included that in the budget. $73,000 will come from those reserves. We've also completely cut staff development and travel. We've cut the amount of money we'll be spending on the collection next year. We're hoping to recoup that with grants from the foundation and the Friends of the Library. And we've also cut our technology budget, and we have a potential, depending on the director search and the management structure, it's possible we will reduce staff by 1 FTE when that happens. So I know Paul's going to want to step in and say a few things, too, that we're all facing, you know, really tremendous challenges right now. And I think we're fortunate that the city is still having property growth. And the one thing that I feel really good about with the library's position is how much money we've been able to save our funding partners through the years with the exemption that we provide from the county tax. And between 2015 and 2019, for example, the city of Hudson taxpayers have saved nearly $1 million by being part of the joint library. And during this tough time, knowing that the pressures we're all facing, I'm just really grateful that we're able to look at the community and say, we've done our part, we hope, over these years to ease the burden on our taxpayers. So I know Paul is there. He might want to say a few words. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Okay, thanks, Shelley. Anybody have any questions to Shelley before Paul starts? Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and common council. We, at the library board, continue to strive to strengthen the relationships between not only the city, but the surrounding partners. As you know, the foundation and the Friends contribute quite heavily from their fundraising efforts to help fund the library's programs. I know last year we were at a 92% rate, or 92% of the funding for our programming came from those fundraising sources between the foundation and the Friends. So those two organizations continue even through 2020 here, this fun year, to be creative in ways to raise funds so that we can continue to be a valuable asset to the community through all of this. One thing we're trying not to do is make ourselves uncompetitive and continue to hemorrhage at the librarian level. So Shelley and myself and Madeline have worked many hours looking at numbers, trying to ease the hit on our partners this year. But rest assured that Shelley and I have had some very straightforward talks with each other, and she knows that 2021, we're going into a big mystery as to what's going to happen from the fallout of 2020, and Shelley is ready to make adjustments as needed and present those to the board, the library board, if we need to. So we're optimistic going into 2021. If there is a drop in the economy going into 2021, the library is ready to be there for the community to be an asset to help those that need it, and provide services to help people get back on their feet through education or whatever it is they need through the library. So that's all I got. That's all I really wanted to say. So thank you again for being a strong partner of our library. And, well, I did have one other thing to say. I did fight, like the dickens, to restore our funding from the county level. I think we were able to get three or four more votes than we did the previous budget cycle. So I guess sometime at this pace in the next six to 12 years, we'll be restored to full funding. I'm joking. We'll continue to work on those relationships and see how that can pan out over the coming years, and hopefully we can get those several $10,000 back to help make sure that we're not bringing the burden just to you guys, the partners, on trying to keep up with the surrounding libraries. So thank you again for your strong support. If you have any questions, I'm probably opening myself up for not great things or whatever. But if you guys have, do you guys have any questions for myself or for Shelley?
Anybody?
Yeah, this is Jim Weber. Shelley, how are we supporting the kids who are basically going to school from using distance learning? Is that affecting our computer capacity or capability, or do we need more?
Um, you know, the one thing that we're seeing with that, there's a lot of requests from parents to help them free up some of the time that parents are having to spend dealing with children at home, or coming home and not having the ability to do any sort of socializing. There's just a lot of pressure on parents at home to fill that gap. And so the things that we're hearing that, for example, that's been really, really popular, is we're putting together kits of science, technology, engineering, mathematics, STEM kits, where kids can take home and do experiments and craft projects that people can take home and put together. And some of these we've done with them over Zoom. Some, they just take the kits home and do them themselves. But it's things like this that parents are expressing the most interest in. It's like, help us keep our kids busy because it's been very hard for us to do our own jobs from home. So those have been some of the biggest requests that we're getting. We are seeing more eBooks circulating. It's a little confusing to the public. Sometimes they think we have an eBook for them to check out, which means 10 people can be reading it at the same time. And it's just like a hard book. One person can check it out at a time. So they're also much more expensive to buy than the book equivalent. So that's been a challenge. We've been trying to redistribute some resources into more eBooks despite the cost, just because we're seeing a lot more demand for them, which is certainly not surprising. So I thank you for the question. That's probably the biggest request that we're hearing from parents, is just help us keep our kids busy.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just thanks for your work, Shelley and Paul. Appreciate your efforts in keeping the library going and the plans you're putting into it, so.
Thank you.
Why are eBooks so much more expensive? What's the cost difference between an eBook and a regular book?
Oh, it could be triple, four times, even five times the amount of a regular book. You know, and the publishing industry with all the changes, and Amazon, and independent authors who aren't associated with publishing, putting their work out, it's a way for them to recoup, you know, in their business model, some of the revenue that they've been losing to the competition. So those books are priced very high, and we also don't get to keep them forever. It depends on the contract, but there's a certain number of checkouts you get for an eBook, and when you've hit those, the book falls off the system. So while it seems like that's a more efficient way for libraries to provide service, it's actually an expensive way to provide service. But we recognize the demand is there. That's what a lot of our patrons and community members want. So we're certainly willing to provide it. But there is a lot of information, misinformation about the cost of those.
Thank you. That's really important information.
Anybody else? All right, Paul, Shelley, thank you so much. And to reiterate what Paul had to say, you guys are doing a great job, and we really appreciate everything you're doing for our community with the library.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a public hearing on the final assessments for the 2019 Vine Street reconstruction project. So this is a public hearing. A couple things. Anybody that might be on Zoom for this, just pipe on in. We can't see all of the people that are on here, so just chime in, and we'll recognize you. And please, if you're on Zoom and want to comment, unmute your microphone so that we can hear what you have to say. So is there anybody here that wants to comment on this? Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this? Is there anyone here who would like to comment on this?
Move to close the public hearing.
We got a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Public hearing is closed. Discussion, possible action on Resolution 15-20 declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers under Wisconsin Statute 66.0703 for the 2019 Vine Street reconstruction project.
Move to suspend.
Move to suspend the rules?
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Dazeo?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
And Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Move to adopt Resolution 15-20.
Second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved. Comments and suggestions from citizens present. All right, so this is the opportunity to speak your mind, any topic that you'd like to discuss, except for anything that is on the agenda. If you wanted to talk about the agenda item or items, please wait until that comes up, and we're considering that, and then you'll have an opportunity to speak. Once again, anybody speaking or coming in that wants to comment on Zoom, please unmute your microphone, and just hop on in, and we'll recognize you. Does anybody have any comment? Any comment?
Could you put your sounds on the speakers so we can hear you?
Uh...
Or turn on your microphones or something? We can't really hear you.
All right. Brian, if we could get you in here?
Thank you.
Any comments? Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none. We'll close that portion of the agenda. Consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from August 17, 2020, regular council meeting. Approve the claims in the amount of $758,644.04. Item C is approve the ordinance 12-20. We need to remove, pull that because we need to make a roll call vote on that. So D, approve the bid received from Icewind LLC in the amount of $35,950 for the installation of permanent dashboards at Burton Park. Approve the request of the Hudson Library's proposal for a solar system walk starting at the Walnut Street Bridge to the end of Dyke Road. Approve the reallocation of the park capital improvement funds for Burton Park improvements. Approve COVID-19 amendment to the park policies for reserving space at city parks.
Please pull that one, and I would like to put that under new business.
Okay. And then approve the contract with FOTH Engineering to complete Task 2 of Lakefront Park Boat Ramp Reconstruction in the amount of $74,000.
Move to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item G.
And C.
And C. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Dazeo?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Unfinished business. Discussion, possible action on ordinance 15-20 or Resolution 16-20 declaring a state of emergency in the city of Hudson and establishing COVID-19 prevention and control measures. Before we get into this, there are a number of things that I think need to be addressed. First of all, number one, in some of the emails that I saw going out, people were apparently under the assumption or misinformation that, that this was added to the agenda behind my back or circumventing me, and I think it had been said a couple different ways. I just want to make that clear. That is not accurate. There is no way there can be an agenda item on the agenda without my knowledge about it. And secondly, on that point is that this has been requested by a couple of our council members for the last couple meetings, and there was no secret about it. It was quite, quite, I guess, prominently requested, and in fact, some of the other emails that came through had indicated that they were listening in on the last meeting and heard the request actually being made. So that's number one. I just want to clarify that. So when we get into this, what I want to indicate here is that anybody that would like to speak, we're going to hear everybody. Everybody that wants to speak is going to be heard tonight. You know that we have a lot of people here, and please try to not repeat points that have already been made. Please try to keep it concise and as short as possible. And for those people that are listening in on Zoom, once again, just speak up. We'll recognize you. Don't raise your hand or anything, because there are quite a few people here on Zoom who we can't see. And so you'd have to just, just kind of pop on in when you see an opening, and also unmute your microphone. For those people that are over at the fire station, we will notify you when we're running low on the number of people left over here in this building to speak and let you, and we'll actually give you some time to get over here. We will announce that we need people to come in from over there if there are still people that want to comment from the fire station. So... Where do you want to begin?
Hopefully I'm sounding better now. I'm just trying to figure out my microphone here. But just basically, just to kick things off, like you said, Mayor, we've had this requested a few times. We've kind of gone back and forth a little bit about some discussions, but nothing really in depth. So I just want to make it clear that right now, the state does have a mandate in place. Now, that mandate is set to expire at the end of this month, so it, you know, it is possible that that could go away at the end of this month. But with that, what we have prepared and attached to the agenda for tonight is a resolution which would strongly encourage or recommend wearing a mask, and then an ordinance that would actually be a local ordinance that would declare the emergency and then mandate to wearing a mask. Now, to be clear, the ordinance that we've prepared is not stricter than the state mandate right now, so we could not adopt the ordinance as presented tonight. The only way that we could adopt an ordinance would be if it is more strict than the state mandate. So what the council could do tonight is they could recommend adoption of this ordinance if the state mandate expires or goes away, or they could direct staff to prepare a ordinance that is more strict than the state mandate, if they want to take action this evening. Otherwise, if the council does not want to take any action this evening, then they don't have to, because the state mandate is in place, but they still can receive the public comment on it. So they would have that available if they decide to take any action this evening. So that's kind of where the decision-making is at, personally.
Um, Aaron, I think it's also possible that if the council wanted to, they could adopt the ordinance if they so choose, but delay the effective date, give it an effective start date after the state order is, expires.
Right. Or if the state order expires, I guess, I would say, if they're going to adopt it, I would say make it that this would go into place if and when the state order expires.
Oh, okay. I thought it had a definite date.
And technically, the governor extends it on the 27th.
Okay.
You know, ours can't go into effect then. So I'd recommend that, at least, just to do it that way, if you're going to make that sort of decision.
Sure.
All right. Everybody clear on that?
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor. Aaron, does there have to be a declaration of emergency before we were to take any of this? this action?
So, in the ordinance, that is part of it. So the ordinance, basically, the draft ordinance declares the emergency and then lays down the mandate with the masks. So where is that? Oh, and then I should also mention, I apologize, I didn't mention this. I did attach in the agenda a survey that the league did, which unfortunately now is almost two months old, but that's when it was done. But they did a, um, the league did a survey of their members to see who's considering masks, things like that. So of the respondents, 102 cities that responded, basically 81% said that they were not, they did not have a mass ordinance and they weren't considering a local one. There was seven responses that said they did have a local mass mandate in place, which would be 6%. There were 17 respondents, or 13% that said they were considering it. And so that's out of 138 responses. You know, obviously, there's more cities in the state, but those are the ones that responded to the survey. So I just want to make sure that that was mentioned, that I included that in there. I know it's potentially outdated at this point, but it's the most recent data I have as far as a statewide look at what other cities are doing.
All right. So we've got, obviously, a lot of people that are here. I presume they're here for this issue. Is there anybody that would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Rebecca Hagel. I'm here for the mask mandate. Currently, as of today, there are 684 cases in St. Croix County. Over 1,000 Americans are dying each day. A good example of why this is needed in government buildings in this county, it has been required to wear masks for quite some time now, and there are several people in this building right now not wearing masks, not being addressed. I really think that the responsible thing to do would be to, to do this mandate. There are people in this town that, um, are at high risk. They stay home, but they have people who have to do things for them, who have to go out into the public where people are not being responsible by wearing the masks and doing the bare minimum. So, I just, I really hope that you really take this seriously and do something about it, and that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Rebecca? Rebecca, could you state your address for the record, please?
Yes, my address is 602 Third Street in Hudson.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Again, identify yourself and address, please.
I don't have anything to add to that, but my name is Kristin Emerson, and I live at 918 Green Street, and I think we need a mask mandate, and I'm going to end with that.
Thank you.
My name is Marion Shaw, 726 East Highway 12, Hudson. I appreciate the opportunity here tonight with one exception. This is the second time we've had to run around to come here. Disappointing part of this is that it has not changed one bit from the last time we were here. What this council is doing is forcing everybody to run around, spend their free time chasing, chasing a ghost. I'm simply going to read, which I normally don't do, but I feel that the council member should hear this, and I think everybody should be aware. This is serious stuff. We have rights that are given to us from our Creator by God that cannot be taken away from us, and so these are addressed in the U.S. Code. Section 18, subsection 241, conspiracy against rights. So I will read. "If two or more persons conspire to injure, oppress, threaten, or intimidate any person in any state, territory, commonwealth, possession, or district in the free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege secured to him by the Constitution or the laws of the United States, or because of his having so exercised the same, or if two or more persons go in disguise on the highway or on the premises of another with intent to prevent or hinder his free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege so secured, they shall be fined under this title or imprisoned not more than 10 years or both, and if death results from the acts committed in violation of this section, or if such acts include kidnapping or an attempt to kidnap, aggravated sexual abuse, or an attempt to commit aggravated sexual abuse, or an attempt to kill, they shall be fined under this title or imprisoned for any term of years or for life, or both, or may be sentenced to death." That, council members, applies to you. This is the supreme law of the land. This is upon which the country is built and founded. This is the Constitution of the United States, and these are the rules that we as citizens have to protect ourselves from such blatant tyranny. There is absolutely no emergency to declare. More cars killed more people in St. Croix County than this COVID crap has even attempted to do. There were 13 deaths. Our COVID numbers have backed up by two somehow. They've gone to seven. We're chasing a ghost. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We've got a ways to go here tonight, and I appreciate the passion and support for the speakers here, but if you would, please refrain. We got a lot of people we need to get through. So I saw somebody on Zoom. Was there a Caswell?
Yes. I agree with Ghost. I believe that, you know, if, if a person wants to wear a mask, then that's their choice. But the woman that was saying that she sees people without a mask, well, how does she know that that individual doesn't have COPD? That wearing a mask could cause them to have constructed, you know, restricted breathing and, or an autistic child that tends to eat their mask and wads it up in a ball and then it's caught in the back of their throat. I've seen it happen. I myself have asthma, and I wear my mask as much as I can, but there's sometimes I cannot wear the mask. I have to pull it down because sometimes I feel like I'm going to fall over because of the breathing. And if everyone is, if those that want to wear a mask, they're protected. If they have their mask on, then they're protected from anyone that's not wearing a mask. And to mandate that everyone wears a mask is not smart, in my opinion, because you could be causing health issues for others who cannot wear a mask for health reasons. And I think it's ridiculous when I see people driving around in cars by themselves with a mask on. They're protecting themselves from themselves, and that's ridiculous. We don't need a mask mandate. We should be able to choose for ourselves, and folks can, you know, regulate themselves. They know what they need to do, and social distancing also works.
All right.
Could you please state your full name and address for the record?
Yep.
Yes, my name is Donora Caswell at 208 Wisconsin Street North, apartment 107, Hudson, Wisconsin. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next. Speaker at the podium?
My name is Michelle Hendricks, and I'm at 1403 Ward Avenue, Hudson, Wisconsin. I just wanted to actually pull some data from Wisconsin Department of Health. I pulled this data today while I was at work. The percent of people who died from COVID is 1.4%. The current death rate, so on the same website, I pulled some more information about the influenza and pneumonia deaths, which we deal with every year for a very long time, and the death rate for those just from this 2019 to 2020 season was 5.6%. So what I would like to understand is we didn't require masks for every flu season prior to COVID, so why now? Nationally, we peaked in March and April when tests were only happening on the admission of people to the hospital. I knew many people who had symptoms but were told to stay home and were not tested. So, the big death numbers that we were seeing in March and April was when we were doing almost no testing. Now, we're boasting that we're doing more testing than anywhere in the world, and the death rate is extremely low. So, if you were to look at it logically, we're doing a lot more testing, the death rate's very low. Well, if the death rate was as high as it was back in March and April, everybody's probably had it by this point in time. So our peak has already happened. There's no emergency, and this is off the CDC website. If you look at the national numbers, right here, this is March and April when we're doing almost no testing. This is now when we're doing hundreds and thousands of testing. So you tell me, where's the emergency? The other thing I wanted to bring up is with the age group. COVID does disproportionately affect people who are over 70, but why does that, why does essentially the workforce and children have to stop everything they're doing? Wouldn't it make a lot more sense if those who are the highest at risk were the ones that we focused on helping protect themselves? The CDC stated last week that 94% of COVID cases had comorbidities. What does that mean? So people who've had a history of heart disease, diabetes, cancer, many other of the biggest killers in the U.S. are at the highest risk, but we don't enforce diet and exercise at the individual level. We don't mandate that people have to do these things to take care of themselves. So why would we enforce wearing a mask at the individual level for the health and safety of others when people regularly make poor health-related decisions that are far more fatal? People need to be personally responsible for their own health. This is not an emergency, and looking at the numbers on the state website and the CDC website, it is absolutely silly that for 1.4% death rate, a quarter of the flu and pneumonia that we deal with on an annual basis, that we would go to this extent, shut down the economy, make everyone wear masks and stay at home. This is just wrong, and I hope that you see that. Thank you.
Someone that...
Is someone on Zoom? No? Go ahead.
Um, where's, can I ask where the camera is? Where should I look if I want to address the people behind this, you know? Where, where am I looking?
This one?
Yep, right there. Okay, I see. My name is Sarah Buckland, 573 Omaha Road in Hudson. I'd like to first ask, make comment to the first woman's statement in that my freedom does not end where others' fears begin. So I just want to start with that. I stand before you today in regards to the mask mandate that you want to have over our city of Hudson. I stand against this ordinance. First, I'd like to ask all those of you who have faith in your masks, if your masks are so effective, why are you hiding behind these screens? Shouldn't you be able, shouldn't they be able to protect you? Or are the masks just about control like we suspect? The political game COVID has turned into is appalling. The lies, corruption, and manipulation surrounding COVID are wide, and you sit here before me and before your own constituents, either blind or complicit in this. This nation was founded on liberty and independence and not on government force and coercion. It is sad, really, because you are showing the arm of tyranny. Are you really wanting the people to be afraid of their government? It seems so. When people are afraid of their government, that is called tyranny. When people are afraid, when the government is afraid of the people, that is called liberty. A few of you here seem to have no fear of reprisal for we, the people. Rest assured, many more people who are not able to show up today are very upset over this. Think of the recall going on right now with Governor Evers. We, the people, are recalling him for his overreach. Some are suing for going against our constitutional rights. We can do the same to you. Don't think we won't. This is unacceptable overreach. Now, providing to the, providing for the welfare of the general public is a basic goal of the government. The preamble to the U.S. Constitution cites promotion of the general welfare as a primary reason for creation of the Constitution. If you look up the word promote, it is defined as furthering the process of something to support or actively encourage. Now, this is quite different than the word enforce or force. You are not to force or enforce the general welfare of the public, but rather to promote it only. Yet this is what you want to do. You took an oath to uphold the Constitution. How have we gotten here? Shame on those of you working to push this mandate on your constituents. You are here to work for us and not against us, and I'll say it again, you are not here to force or enforce anything. You are here to promote liberty and independence. The arrogance you exude when you think that you can make choices for us as a whole instead of allowing us to make choices for ourselves as individuals is appalling. I ask that you hear our voices today. I ask that you remember back when you were running for election. Can you hear yourself saying, "I want to be a representative of the people. I want to hear, and I will listen to their voices." Well, here we are. We are before you speaking. The question is, are you listening? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jennifer Crohn Schup, and I live at 634 91st Street in Hudson. I own a business here in town, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my children and the children of many other people and our community members. I have twins that are age nine and a six-year-old. I am pro-freedom. I am pro-critical thinking. I am pro-conversation. I am pro-every-voice-matters. I am pro-medical-choice, as I am sure you are too, and that's why you're in this position. I get to hear every day in practice of the people who were abused, kids with sensory issues, and those in the military who have served our country defending our freedom, who have panic attacks when they even think about wearing a mask. This also affects my patients every day and can seriously debilitate them in a moment's time. Then, there's also the study from the CDC from a survey June 24th through the 30th, 2020, stating that 25% of 18 to 24-year-olds have seriously considered suicide in the past 30 days. Think about that. The past 30 days, 25%. It's not adding up with this, what this virus is doing. This comes from being isolated, having rights stripped, and not being able to socialize, so important and so vital at this age. I could go on with more research about this virus, but that's been being covered and will be covered even more tonight, and new research is constantly emerging. We don't know what the total statistics are. With this new research coming out, I feel it's too soon to make any decision to take away rights. My ask and my plea is that if you have any doubt, any doubt at all, you are prematurely stripping away freedoms of those who have voted for you in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you. You can have mine for now.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to come and address this issue with you.
Again, name and address, please.
My name is Jim Kahler. I live in 1029 Scott Road in Hudson, Wisconsin. I'm here because I'm concerned about our liberties. One of the articles I gave you is, has the show about the shutdown in Sweden, and the reason why the Swedish country did not close down its economy or its people was because they were concerned about the Swedes' liberties. We here in the United States seem to be going the other direction in that we want to close down our society and we want to limit people's... down our society and we want to limit people's freedoms. And so my concern here is about the Wisconsin Counties Association guidelines. I can't get a full copy of them, but what I saw online tells me this, that back in March 12th, the governor declared a health emergency and gave a broad power to the Department of Health Services. And in April, the Supreme Court overturned the governor's order as unconstitutional. Well, since then, the Wisconsin Counties Association has come up to provide these guidelines for how the local health officer should work. And I submit to you that the proposed ordinance is designed to run an endgame around what the Supreme Court has told the governor was unconstitutional. The county health board, I mean, yeah, there are some concerning statements within the Wisconsin Counties Association guidelines. I see language in there which is not that it's temporary, but that it's permanent, that it gives a lot of authority to the local health officer. It is not designed solely for the issues surrounding COVID-19, but it has a broad definition of all communicable diseases. It will provide local law enforcement to have the mechanisms to enforce what the local health officer is mandating. Authority to address situations involving the presence of communicable disease in a particular individual or in a group. And I think that's been done in a lot of states around, in terms of those who have religious observances, and limiting people and groups in that way. Both the statutes and the administrative code provide guidance on a local health officer, what he must do. And when it comes to enforcing the local officer's orders, the code provides a specific legal remedy. So this is not going to be just a slap on the hand. It's going to be that if you're in violation of the officer's guidance codes, you're going to be hauled into court. Local health officer's authority, again, I see the word mandating and authoritarianism in the Wisconsin Association of, the Wisconsin Counties Association guidelines. Our liberties are given to us by God and not provided by the government or the local health officer. Please, sir, I hope that you consider these sincerely, and you will vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question from Zoom?
Can I also leave a comment on Zoom?
Who's it? It showed up as admin's phone. Yeah, who's on Zoom?
This is Timothy Hall from Hudson. So I would like to make a comment. Number one, I support the proposed mask ordinance. Ideally, this would normally be done at the state level. However, when it was attempted, the Supreme Court made a decision to return it back to the legislature because proper rulemaking had not been followed. It was not a constitutional issue per se of the power to do it. The legislature just chose, in their own wisdom, to abrogate responsibility for proceeding and turn it over to a mishmash of counties and municipalities attempting to put in place what should normally be done at the state level. That said, that is now where we're at. This will lapse on the 28th, and we need to have something to protect our citizens. I've heard a lot of people speak about their rights. And I've also heard Abraham Lincoln quoted as saying, "We all have rights, but they end at where the other person's nose starts when you go to swing your arms." So we have a responsibility. Rights without responsibilities is called adolescence. I would like us all to take a quick look at where we stand as a country. This is not some big political conspiracy. This is a mindless virus who is very fatal, and we need to address it. I take great umbrage at the idea that this is something cooked up by the whole world to somehow subvert American freedoms. So let's just take a look at the science. I've heard a lot of amateur epidemiologists tonight. I'd like to hear from some medical professionals, which we have at St. Croix County. I hope they join. But in the end of the day, I support this. We are not a democracy that's in pure form. We are representative, and so we elect people to make these decisions. They're hard choices, and I would expect everyone on that board has thought through this very carefully. And before they make a vote, they will await not only what's best for everyone, that their constituents are, but also the impact on freedoms. It's a tough call, but all of the hard, but really good decisions are that. Thank you.
So, Tim, if I may ask you a question, you are a county supervisor. The city of Wisconsin does not have a health department. We do not have a health director, and we look to the county for guidance on these things. And much of what we're talking about now has to do with the guidance that's coming from the county.
Yep.
Why aren't you pushing that at the county level?
I am. I'm in favor of that.
And what's going on there? I mean, that's where you have a voice. You have a health department there, and we don't.
I know. I'm also a citizen of the city. And so if we fail to act at the county level because of pressure groups, then it will fall to the city. But I advocate for the mask ordinance at the county level. I support it. I've been very clear about that in our meetings. It's been since May that we're trying to get this through our subcommittees, and we hope to have it up for a vote next month. So I'm in favor of it. I support it. I think it's the reasonable and rational thing to do if we have to. I would much prefer to see this done at the state level. However, that doesn't appear to be something that's going to happen in our current political state.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan McMichael. I live at 627 91st Street in Hudson. I'm 16 years old, and I work at Brettard, which is a bakery in Bayport. And right now, Minnesota does have the Minnesota, or have the mask mandates. And I think that mask or no mask, it shouldn't be up to restaurants, businesses, or any small business owner to enforce the mask mandate. I think it's dangerous for not only the employees, but I think it also puts a lot of stress to these local business owners, which are support, which is like our community, which supports our community, backbone of America, our small businesses. And at Brettard, we have to mandate masks because there's a really big fine if you don't, or jail time. So basically, the jeopardy of the whole business is at risk because of this mask mandate. And it is up to them to enforce it, which they aren't there all the time. People aren't going to listen. People who have medical exemptions, like that can't wear masks, like we don't want to isolate them, we don't want to alienate them. And I, as a 16-year-old, I get troubled with older men, older people, all the time over masks, which I don't feel safe getting yelled at by like a 50-year-old man, when I don't think it's my job or these, like a bakery owner's job to have to push masks on people, on like other people, when it doesn't really affect their business at all. I don't think it's fair to put their business on the line of what other people do and put, I'm not the only 16-year-old that's working. And I don't think it's fair to put young people, young females, just anyone, at that type of risk, too. Because people get angry, and I just don't think that it should be up to restaurants who are already struggling during this time, or up to just workers who are just trying to do their own thing. I don't think anyone should have to interfere with anyone's life and like what they want to do. Because if someone doesn't want to wear a mask, you're not going to wear a mask. And I personally can't make a 50-year-old male wear a mask, you know? And when I need to like push that, that's, I'm putting myself into a situation, and there's other people doing that, too. And so I don't think that businesses should have to enforce the mask, whether or not there is a mandate. I think there should be other ways found to be able to do that, because I don't think it's fair to anyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
Yes.
Yes.
Where are you from? Address?
I'm from Hudson. I live, my address is 838 Kelly Road. And I am a healthcare professional. I'm a registered nurse. I have a private practice as a massage therapist, energy worker for humans and animals. And so I consult, and I understand the conflicts. They're huge. But what we're doing here tonight is listening to everybody's stories. And they're all right. But the problem we're putting ourselves in, so the position that you folks have in determining whether or not these masks should be a mandate in our town, puts you in a situation not unlike what this young lady is talking about. And it also puts us, as citizens, in something that is already occurring, which is a lot of anger, a lot of right, and a lot of wrong. We all have a position on how we feel and think about this. And truly, it is a science that, for all of the science and for all of us that are in healthcare, depending upon where you are on this planet, there are differences of opinions in terms of how to handle it and how to manage it. And what I can tell you is, if you truly, honest to God, want to wear a mask that's going to make a difference, it's not going to be bought at your local store, at county fairs, Etsy, the Packer Pro Shop. Those masks make you feel better, but they are not going to prevent you from catching this virus if it truly is there. So the only masks that are going to do that are the kind of masks that, if you remember early on when this was really hitting hard in New York, are the medical-grade masks. And they were running short. And that was a pretty powerful story that we got to watch and unfold. And it did, it scared the entire country, and it scares us still, which is why we're all sitting here, listening to everybody's stories. And the point, again, bringing back to this board, is you're putting yourselves in a position that is not going to turn out well, should you require people in the city of Hudson and anyplace else to wear something that, quite honestly, is not going to, from a science-based method, protect you. Hand washing, limiting crowds, if you yourself are sick, you have underlying illnesses, you are the ones that need to be isolating. To be thoughtful about your neighbors, to be thoughtful about where you go, who you come in contact with, it's asking the right questions of those individuals that you're with. Are you well? You know, it's really being considerate of someone else. So for me personally, when I practice and I go out to individuals' homes, I ask all of those questions. And if I'm sick, I don't go anywhere because I have enough education and enough self-respect and respect for the people that I am in contact with to consider. And that's really what we want, when it comes right down to it. We want to be thoughtful of each other. This polarization that is occurring in our country cannot leak into our city because we are then positioning ourselves to judge. That's what's happening here. You're being mask-shamed or judged whether you're wearing one or not, and everybody has an opinion on it. So I think if we brought ourselves back to ourselves, back to yourself, and be respectful enough about yourself, and realize that you're not going to agree with everybody, this is a hot topic. But if you're respectful enough to consider someone else, and if they ask you to wear a mask, then do that. If masks aren't mandated in a private business, I love the young lady from Brettard, God bless you. That's an example of what I'm talking about. We are positioning people, and it's our young people that are being put in positions of having to deal with things that, quite honestly, we don't want that for them. So my recommendation to the board is for you to consider, to consider the human nature, which is, by and large, we all want to get along. We all want to stay well. But more importantly, we want to have healthy relationships, and you do that by consideration, not by mandating something. So you put yourself in a position to control, and now you have to defend that. How are you going to do that? I mean, you open up a can of worms when you are putting those kinds of mandates in a position, and you do not have any way of knowing until you've done something like that. The unintended consequences, and I think we've gone a long far enough for us to actually have a glimpse of what that's like. We're seeing it. It doesn't have to come to Hudson. I think this is a time for us to maybe pause. You don't have to vote on something like right now. Think about it. Everybody go home tonight and thank God you're well. Thank God for your neighbors. Thank God for your family. And truly, honest to God, I am telling you this, if you consider other people, you're always going to do the right thing. Because you don't leave your house in the morning with the intention of harming somebody. And I think that once that is where you start from, a lot of decisions that you make actually are going to be for all of the right reasons. And if somebody needs you to wear a mask, then just put it on. But don't make it law. Don't make this something that the city of Hudson is going to regret. And I'm afraid, my friends, that that may exactly be what happens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jill.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Kapka. I live at, I reside at 961 Daly Road here in Hudson. I also work here in Hudson. We have four children. Two of them are here today, Eden and Benjamin here. I'm coming to you as a concerned mom. I have a good friend who is a retired FBI agent, and he said he would take a concerned mom over any FBI agent doing research any day, because a concerned mom will out-research an FBI agent. And I am a concerned mom. When COVID first came on the scene, we were quarantined at home, and I had nothing but time. And so I started researching, started asking questions and digging. And what I found was a lot of flip-flopping from our so-called specialists or so-called, yeah, specialists, yeah, experts, thank you. And there just was a lot of different experts that didn't agree. And as more information started coming, and the model started shrinking, and it became apparent that this wasn't as great a concern as it was once thought. But then the masks came, and the mask mandates came. And a lot of it was, it'll help you feel better. We heard a lot of things like, well, what does it hurt? Maybe it'll, you know, even if it just helps a little bit, what does it hurt? But then, again, my concerned mom mode kicks in, right? And I start thinking about my kids, and I start wondering, well, what does it do when my kids are wearing these masks for seven hours? So I go into research mode, and there is no studies, long-term studies, about kids wearing masks for seven hours. Or my kids that are working downtown in the different restaurants downtown. I have teenagers that work here, and they have to wear their masks, and they're coming home with, you know, acne and different things that are happening to their skin because of these masks that they're being forced to wear. These kids are still developing. Not only are they physically developing, but their brains are still developing. They don't have frontal lobe, their frontal lobes haven't fully developed yet. And we're restricting their oxygen. They're breathing in these toxins that are being released that are still hanging out in their masks, they're breathing those back in. What are the long-term effects of these individuals wearing these masks? We don't know. So my question is, are you 100%, can you tell me, as a concerned mom, are you 100% positive that this isn't going to affect my kids? And if it does, let's say, two years from now, there is a long-term effect... And if it does, let's say two years from now, there is a long-term effect, who can I hold responsible for that? Because you forced me to put my kids in a mask. So I just want to ask that. I mean, there's, we don't know what the potential of masking all these people long-term. You know, when I go to work and I have to wear a mask, what is that doing to me? I know I don't feel as well. I definitely don't, you know, and I'm trying to, we all, you know, when you're trying to talk and communicate, again, even socially too, what is this going to do to my kids socially? What is this going to do to their mental, you know, long-term? So I ask that you don't pass this mandate until you can tell me as a concerned mom, you can assure me that this is safe, long-term, for me and my children. And that there isn't going to be long-term issues that we're going to face here in a year or two because we've been masking our kids. Thank you for listening. I know this is a huge issue for you guys. I know you're wrestling. I really appreciate you listening to our voice and I hope you have a great night.
Thank you.
Can I say something from Zoom?
Yeah, another one or?
Go ahead.
All right. Well, first of all, I just want to applaud everybody for coming out here and voicing your opinion for whatever side of the fence you sit on. My name is John Adamick. I live at 14 Windsorwood Path, Hudson, Wisconsin. And as you see here, I wear this proudly on my head, proudly. And thank you, Ghost. I don't need to remind you of the sworn oath you took to the Constitution, but I'm one of those guys that swore to defend it. I sat my ass in Iraq. I fought for this country. I was shot. I was blown up and I held some of my best friends while they died, all so that we could have this freedom of choice and seek asylum, a country where people can seek asylum and seek freedom to have that choice, to do just that. And now I sit here as a business owner. And a lot of my clients I've seen here tonight, we're local, we do a lot of them in the Midwest. And to see really the impact that this has had financially on these companies, I've had seven clients now fold their doors because, you know, at the end of the day, an overexaggeration on a virus that has a death, what, a kill rate of a half a percent?
A kill rate.
What's that?
A kill rate.
Hang on one second, please. Do not interrupt the speaker. Thank you. So with that being said, I've watched these businesses crumble, these livelihoods of peoples that have spent 20 years building something be stripped away from them. And now you only further progress that here in Hudson. You prevent these businesses from taking the steps they need to secure their financial freedom. And at the same time, you prevent those people from making the, really the decisions that their liberties were sacrificed by the countless Americans that graves sit in Arlington, that sit out there in Fort Snelling, they sit all across the globe defending freedom, both foreign and domestic, on how many different foreign soils. That's all I got to say. Us vets are against this. I know I can speak for all of them. Thank you. We got Dee Caswell on Zoom.
Yes, I wanted to say that my husband is a veteran. He served 20 years in the Air Force and he recently has had a situation about five years
I'm sorry, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, 208 Wisconsin Street North, apartment 107, Hudson, Wisconsin. My husband agrees with that. He's had a situation due to serving in the military. He had two brain aneurysms and it's hard for him to wear a mask. And he agrees with that. He's fought for these freedoms, but he agrees also in the liberty and being able to choose.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Can I also say something from Zoom or is there somebody?
We've got somebody at the podium.
Okay.
My name is Christine Benshine and I live at 1903 Ironwood Bay in Hudson, Wisconsin. Thank you for allowing us to speak today and for your service. I will be brief. I'm not as eloquently prepared as the others, but I'm here simply to voice my opposition to any extension or increase in the mandate and ask you to vote no. There are so many individual situations to consider that a blanket ruling doesn't seem reasonable to me. I also believe the negative effects on people's overall well-being are currently outweighing the benefits of the restrictions. As a local music teacher, it also makes me sad that something like singing is denied children in school, an activity that will strengthen both the lungs and spirit. Finally, I urge you to trust the common sense of its citizens to do what they deem is in the best interest of their own health and that they will be respectful of others. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we got somebody on Zoom.
Yep. Hi, my name's Addison Filiatro. I live at 213 River Street in Hudson. Normally I come, but I, I'm by myself with my kids. But thank you for being in a frankly difficult position that you probably didn't sign up for when you ran for city council. I feel a little uncomfortable making this particular public comment because of all the madness that's going on in the chats, which is why I don't normally involve myself in the mask debate. America's an individualistic society, but we have to work together on this once-in-a-time pandemic. If it helps a little, that's just why I wear a mask. I've appreciated that since the mask mandate, people are wearing masks more frequently. A big reason I wear a mask is so that kids can keep going to school and that businesses can stay open because the economic difficulties for businesses and providing in-person instruction has been brutal for so many people. It also takes the pressure off of local businesses, as the young woman said. For that reason, I would encourage the council to have a mask mandate that isn't necessarily flying-oriented, but just a continuation of what expires September 28th. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Addison.
Hi, my name is Jessica Clatt and I actually reside in Hammond, Wisconsin at 1771 96th Avenue in Hammond. And I do workshop and play in Hudson, so I felt it was necessary for me to speak up. I also have a grandfather who lives in long-term care here in the city of Hudson, and I could go on about the stories that are happening with that government overreach. But I'm going to start with a quote by Thomas Paine. "The greatest tyrannies are always perpetrated in the name of the noblest causes." I want you guys to think about that for just a minute as I go over some of these stats. I want you to think about the fact also that cancer kills over 600,000 Americans every year on average, and I do not see the outrage up here. So giving you some stats from the county website, which I'd also like to talk more about. The first lady that spoke up here tonight spoke of a number of 684 St. Croix County residents. I want you guys to remember, this is a cumulative number. There's no clarification on if this number is just confirmed laboratory cases or also contains probable cases. Total recovered is 541. Do you know how somebody is considered a recovered COVID person? They have to be symptom-free, they have to go past the quarantine period, and they have to pass two negative COVID tests within 24 hours. How many people do you think go back for COVID tests? That leads us to our active cases. We have 136 active cases. A week ago, we had 164. Those numbers are going down. And again, they're going to be active until they go in for another round of COVID testing. We've had seven deaths in our county in total, not thousands as the first speaker spoke of. Currently, we have one hospitalized patient in St. Croix County. We have two St. Croix County residents hospitalized outside of this county. So I would like somebody to explain how what we're looking at in the city of Hudson and at St. Croix County's level is not an overreach of our government for one of the noblest causes. Wear a mask to save other people or you're a murderer. That's how it works. Scare tactics. I want to read to you something straight from St. Croix County's website. Tim Hall spoke up tonight. I've emailed with him myself. He's one of your board supervisors here in the county. One of the questions under the FAQs is, will this proposed ordinance impact our individual rights? I'm going to read you the answer. And as a citizen of this county, I'd like you to think about this for yourself. The intention of this ordinance is not to impact individual rights. Oh, good. It is to safely measure to protect all of us if our voluntary efforts fail to prevent the spread of infections, diseases and loss of life. We're not talking about COVID. We're talking about anything they deem as an infectious disease. Where does this stop? The rest is really fun. Public health has the duty to protect the health and well-being of everyone in St. Croix County using the least restrictive means necessary. In extreme circumstances, some constitutional rights may be limited as long as there is a strong enough reason to do so and so long as the measures are implemented in the least restrictive manner. If that doesn't concern you guys, that's where the real problem lies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have somebody there on Zoom.
I would, this is Tori Boomsma. I have a question.
Okay, Tori. First of all, where are you from? I mean, put your address.
923 Third Street.
Yep.
Um, my only question is, how do we deem when it's an emergency situation? Like the numbers, previously, everybody's already stated the numbers in cases that are in St. Croix County. At what point does the city deem it an emergency situation for them, for you to enact the mask ordinance? I don't know if you can answer that now, but that's just my main concern is, as the numbers are decreasing, is it just a blanket or do we end it at some point? Or how do we get that finalization? That's my, that was my only comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Tori.
Hi, my name's Elise Multer. I reside at 1006 St. Croix Street North. I'm just here today with many people. I did a preliminary head count. There is over 50 people in this building and there's over 50 people in the other building. The majority here that have showed up in person, I hope you can take that into consideration, have been against this particular thing that's going on right now. I just want to take that into consideration. You are here to uphold the Constitution. You're here to uphold the people in your community. I am so sick of being a part of Minnesota. I live in Wisconsin because I love Wisconsin. Don't turn us into them. Like, that is not why I live here. I'm sorry. I'm just going to say it how it is. We live in Hudson and we are part of Wisconsin. This is declaring to increase the state mandate? We are a city in Hudson. This is not even the county level. Why are we taking it to this small of a level? If you want to take it to that county level, look, yep, there's been seven deaths. That sucks. People die, it sucks. That is part of life. It's terrible. I don't want anyone to die of COVID. But you need to leave that up to the individuals, how they want to live their lives. If people want to stay home, want to wear masks, let them. That is their choice. Let the rest of us get back to our regular lives. Let's look at the science, okay? Show me one scientific study that proves that a mask that we're all wearing, half the people here, I would say actually 90% of the people here are not wearing them, but in general, out in the public, the masks we're wearing, the handmade ones, the cloth ones, all those, let's look at those. How effective are those against viruses in general? Almost nothing. If you look at the microscopic size of a viral particle and the microscopic size of a bacteria, I'm sure we've all seen that disgusting slide of that bacteria growing on that thing. Well, guess what? That's on your flippin' mask that you're breathing in all day. Guess where the virus is? That went through those pores in your stupid mask that you're wearing. It literally is. If you look at the science, let's look at the science. Because I know, you know, there's Democrats, Republicans, there's all these people. I know the Democrats push that science. Let's push that science. Show me the science. Show me the science that shows that these masks are helping against COVID-19. It simply isn't there. If you look at before COVID-19, influenza, they can't even put those on the mask. The FDA doesn't even allow it to be approved for viruses because it doesn't work for viruses. Why are we having a mask mandate for a virus? If you want to wear it again, let people wear it, but let the rest of us get back to it.
Mask mandate?
Can I have a Zoom comment?
Yep. Identify yourself, place an address.
Okay, yes, so my name is-
Brandon, hi, this is Larry Fiddler here.
No, no, we're, sorry, hang on, hang on. It was a woman first, a mask mandate, does the, are you there?
Thank you. Are you talking to me?
Yep.
Okay, so my name is Kristen Emerson. I live at 918 Green Street. And yes, I've already spoken once. The woman who just spoke was, she talked about all of the people that were there in person. I think a lot of the people that are there in person are against the mask mandate because they don't really understand the science. I'm not here to talk about science. I am not a doctor. But, you know, if everybody's there and cheering, we've got to understand that this is not, this isn't how the mask works. So you're all there, you're all cheering, you're all getting COVID. Yay for you. Let's get a doctor in here. Can we get a doctor? Can we get some actual science? Are we just going to sit here and throw memes back and forth? Because I feel like that's what's happening right now. We're just throwing Facebook memes back and forth. So, I mean, is there some science out there? Is there a doctor out there? Is there something, is there somebody that's going to actually put something real out there? Because I hear a lot of people throwing out, oh, science says, science says. Well, yeah, Facebook science has a lot of stuff. But, I mean, how long are we going to go back and forth with this, I guess, is my question?
We are going to be here until everyone has had a chance to speak.
Okay, so even if we keep saying the same things?
So, and what I would like to do, because we're not able to keep track of the people that have spoken so far, please try to limit your comments to just one time. I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, my name is Rachel Eversen-Fink. I live at 634 Wisconsin Street, Hudson, Wisconsin. And I come to you both as a poli sci major and as also someone that has worked in the neuro ICU units at the hospital. I've done my own research, as has everyone else here. We could talk to you about Virom. We could talk to you about Dr. Zach Bush, who's talked about that, who's talked about how air particulate matter is one of the reasons that people are suffering with COVID. And so do your research. Follow him. He's a triple board certified doctor and you can dig into that if you want. What we're really speaking to in many ways here is vague, nonspecific language that makes it really unclear when we will be done. When we're looking at the numbers, we don't see cause. That's an issue. As a poli sci major, it is a slippery slope when we start thinking about precedent setting. That is how laws are made, everyone. If you say, this is what we're doing, and you give nonspecific vague information, that is what we use later when we are drafting law. That is how this works, long-term. We can have the best of intentions right now to put forth a mask mandate because we want to save people and I understand that. And I am telling you, just like Jill who spoke earlier spoke to, if I'm sick, I don't go out. I keep my distance. I wash my hands. I eat a good diet. Those are things that are in my control. If I was over 65 in a high-risk age group on an ACE inhibitor, which has been proven, proven to increase your risk of COVID-19, I would take every precaution. There is science out there to let you know if you are at greater risk. Take the precautions. Make sure that you're using your own judgment to make yourself healthier. This is a conversation about precedence setting, and I don't know how else to say it to you than that. That down the road, with the best of intentions, we will mandate something that we cannot come back from. We can recommend it, we can encourage it, but I would beg you to research the Virom. I would recommend that you research ACE inhibitors and how they increase your risk. Do your own research. That is what we are asking everyone to do here. We appreciate the hard and difficult- We appreciate the hard and difficult position that you are in. We are not asking for people to get hurt. I know many people here who are not interested in having anyone be affected by this negatively. We are coming to as an informed, thoughtful citizen, ship, all of us. We want everyone to live. We want everyone to be okay. I know many people, many people that step out in their masks, even though they do not agree with it, out of respect for other people. We are asking for the courtesy to be able to make that choice freely, that a mask mandate is a slippery slope and that you are begging from us, something that we do not feel comfortable with. Okay, we're seeing it in other countries. I really have to beg you to think more holistically about this. That is what we're speaking to and do your own research. Really ask yourself, how does COVID-19 affect people? And look at some doctors that are doing that research because it does, it changes daily. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, this is Bill.
Okay, Bill from where? And you're-
Yeah, Bill Schachner, I'm from Holden, Wisconsin.
Okay.
And I keep, I keep hearing more and more people looking for doctors and expertise in this field and I just want to qualify my comments in advance in that I've worked for over 40 years in the development of medications for asthma, which requires that people are treated with very small particles to get into the lungs. And, you know, people have been talking about the science and how the science shows this and doesn't show that. The particles we work with to deliver to the lungs are around two microns in size. Your normal virus is at least 20 times smaller than that. And I can tell you right now that working in the development of these products, the masks that they're allowing people to wear are completely inappropriate. My company would be cited by OSHA if we tried using those masks as employee protection. Um, and I'm sure most of you that wear glasses that put a mask on, uh, the ones that are out there in general use, end up fogging your glasses up when you either speak or breathe hard through that mask, which is just indicative of how ineffective those masks are. When I worked in company, earlier in my years, when I was actually making the drug small, it took a significant training and a very specific filtering techniques to keep you from being exposed to this, to those powders. And I can only imagine that with the virus, it is much, much worse. And so I do ask that people, you know, uh, being an expert in the field, that this is something that is true. These masks do not work. And again, we can look at some people saying one thing, some people saying another. I can guarantee you, OSHA would not allow these masks to be used in any environment where you could potentially inhale a particulate. They would not be effective. The other part that, you know, is concerning about this is that the city of Hudson itself, as you've already stated, does not have a medical capability in any way, shape or form. You're reliant on the county for that aspect. In that respect, I would respectfully ask that you leave it to the county where they have the expertise to make these decisions. Because taking this and making a decision where you're seeing a lot of the emotions jump up, just saying that we need to do it to protect people, I understand. People think that they're doing the right thing. But again, being a professional in the field of innovation, uh, technology, these masks do nothing. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Leslie Swanby. My address is 420 Summers Landing Road North. I came tonight just because I got this email, come down here. I'm not a public speaker, so I thought I would. And just to express my feelings about this COVID thing, I work in an assisted living facility in Minnesota and I wear masks and goggles all day out of respect for the people that I serve that live in the home. And I do understand there is a, a risk for people in, that are, you know, the elderly population. But we're learning more and more each day that COVID-19 is not as deadly as we thought or were, were told that it was going to be in the beginning. Just last week in the New York Times, it reported that only 6% of people that do contract COVID die from the disease. And, um, I don't have my statistics, but, but, you know, more people die of heart disease, uh, suicide, drug overdose, um, car accidents. And, um, like I heard Tucker Carlson say last night on Fox, that, you know, we would save a lot of lives in the United States if we changed the, the speed limit to 10 miles per hour, but we're not going to do that because it just doesn't make much sense. So, um, uh, again, you know, the, we're also learning that, you know, we got Dr. Fauci saying in the beginning, you know, um, yeah, wear a mask or, no, he said, don't wear masks and now he's saying, wear masks. So, you know, do we really know, as we've heard, um, so many times here tonight, uh, how effective mask wearing is? And is COVID really a, um, a state of emergency in this, in this country? And, uh, I just want to say there really is a state of emergency in this country. It is perfectly legal for a woman to go into an abortion facility and kill her baby up until five minutes before it is, is to be born, at nine months. That to me is a state of emergency. And if we really, really cared about the citizens of our country, we would care about all citizens and all forms of life. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Andrew Nelson, 833 Moonbeam Road West. Uh, we have an office at 603rd Street in Hudson. Uh, my concern is mostly about the redundancy here. Uh, there's already state statutes that provide authority to the State Department of Health to, uh, take whatever steps necessary to protect the public if they do so under the proper, um, statutory authority. Uh, it may involve, uh, rules, regulations and the like. It may involve, uh, providing some sort of input by the legislature, but at the end of the day, the provisions are there for the State Department of Health to, uh, enact a mask mandate appropriately, uh, to essentially do what the governor did with an executive order previously, shut things down, um, closed schools, closed different organizations based on, uh, particular outbreaks. So it's all there, right there in the state statutes that allows a government entity to do all these things. Uh, likewise, uh, state statute also grants authority through the, uh, these statutes to the counties and the county's Department of Health. Um, I thi- I see this as a complete redundancy and something that would be completely unnecessary. You're talking about adding additional regulations, an additional layer of, of, you know, governmental rules here where it's clearly not necessary. There's already procedures, rules, statutes and the like out there that allow for any number of different actions to be taken by the appropriate authorities here. And my opinion is that ultimately, an additional layer of them is completely unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Dennison. I live at 608 Grange Road. We are asked to follow the science, yet increasingly science is indicating that these attempts at emergency orders, mask mandates and other restrictive ordinances have nothing to do with science. Hospitalizations in our county are minimal, as are death rates. I assume that this current push for an emergency order and mask mandate is in part due to positive virus testing. Experts are warning us with the PCR tests that are being used for COVID, we have possibly overestimated cases by 90%. Dr. Didier, Didier Reault was the world's leading disease expert until March 12th, when he advocated for the use of HCQ. According to the European Journal of Clinical Microbiology and Infectious Disease, published on April 27th, 2020, he and other physicians have determined that the PCR test we are using is too sensitive. Proper viral load threshold for coronavirus is a level of 30 cycles. Anything below 33 is not contagious. The test we are using has a level load as high as 37 to 40 cycles. At this level, we are picking up scant amounts of RNA or environmental contaminants. These tests may produce a high false positive rate. For example, the 77 football players who tested positive and then tested negative when they were, when they reran these tests. They may detect people who have already had the virus and have recovered or simply have a symptom as mild as a sniffles as they are not still shedding, as they are still shedding the dead virus, but are not contagious. Cases in the city, county, state and country are not a reliable indication of the severity of COVID. Regarding the use of masks, randomized controlled tests, RCTs, done in 2009, 10, 12, 16, 17, 19 and 20 have all found the same thing, that statistically masks resulted in no significant prevention of the spread of virus. And in fact, they actually could have negative effects on health, depending on the type of mask use. If you say that a cloth, cloth mask is better than nothing, show us the RCT for your conclusion. If you say that any mask works in this situation, show us the RCT. There are many people who have health conditions, medical and mental and physical that make wearing a mask detrimental. They should be exempt according to the ADA. These people have already encountered prejudices and outright hostility when they try to claim this exemption. By law, HIPAA declares they should not have to disclose this condition, yet many times they're being asked to do so. My mother is 80 years old and is afraid to not comply with a mask mandate. However, the mask makes it difficult for her to breathe and makes her feel unwell even to wear for short periods of time. My pregnant niece wears a mask because she is afraid not to do so. We are not considering the long-term impact in physical health, mental health and financial health of how these mandates and ordinances, masks and a lack of physical contact are affecting our children, senior citizens and businesses. The virus has had minimal impact in our city and county with a low death and hospitalization rate, inaccurate and suspect test results, and yet we are considering drastic measures at both the city and county level. Can you guarantee that there will be no long-term effects for this additional mandate regarding the wearing of masks? Everyone seems terrified of the possible lawsuits that could result from even one child or adult testing positive in any school or business. However, with these mandates in place for these prolonged periods of time, I can assure you that when the results start to come in soon or even years from now, the class action lawsuits and litigation that our city and county will be facing will cost taxpayers far more than the sporadic positive cases that everyone seems so afraid of. Our city is considering an emergency order and I have to ask, what emergency? The people that are represented here are just a small portion of our city because most people aren't even aware that our city council is voting on this issue. If you go ahead and vote yes for this plan, your constituents will be shocked and they will be furious. The residents of the city will not thank you now or in the long term if you vote yes today. Please vote no.
Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, my name is Mark Cuny. I live at 46 Ashbury Court in Hudson, Wisconsin. And I've heard a lot tonight, this is not a repeat. So the CDC has a link, I've posted it several times, and they post the weekly deaths of all cases. Now you can dig into all the individual type of deaths, whether it's flu, pneumonia, you call it whatever you want, or even COVID, it doesn't matter. The weekly deaths per week on average is 1,000, give or take. And guess what? 2020 is no different than 2019. So if this thing is really an emergency, you would expect to see the weekly death average being much higher than anything in 2019, but it is not. And nobody talks about this. This is gaslighting and everybody that's doing all this crap to force us to wear a mask, it's, it's just crap. That's what it is. There is no substance to this whatsoever. And if there is, show me in the total deaths, because you can lie about COVID, pneumonia, flu, cardiac, I don't care what it is, but the total deaths do not lie. Period.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Groby. I live at 841 Moonbeam Road West in Hudson, Wisconsin. I am a teacher. I teach in early childhood and I teach across the border. I work with four-year-olds every single day and I worked with them last year and I worked with them for the last 30 years. One of the things that I see that has changed with our children is that they are afraid of a germ. They are scared about any little particle that might be there. Oh, it might be a germ, might be a germ. I heard my own grandchild say this spring, that, um, a little friend asked him if he could come over for a play date and he goes, said, no, I'm sorry, not until COVID's over. These kids are scared. I watch it every single day in the classroom. These kids are afraid to give a hug, they're afraid to give a high five, they're afraid to come over and get comfort from anybody. And it's all because we are putting up a fear of, for kids that is unbelievable and they hear it everywhere around them. It's on the TV 24/7 and now we're going to say that we're going to make a mandate in this town too? It, it scares me. It scares me that we are going to have a generation of children that can't leave their parents' side because they're afraid. I work at a private school. We had, in my own preschool, 17 families that pulled out because they were scared of COVID. But at that same token, I had 17 new families and I have a waiting list waiting to get in because people are afraid for their children to stay home because they're seeing what's happening to their children every single day. In preschool, Governor Walz said they do not have to wear a mask. We as teachers, if we deem it necessary that they need to see our face, we don't have to wear a mask while teaching them either. However, when I'm leaning over a child, I'm going to give that child that respect and put a mask across my face or a shield. I've spent hundreds of dollars of my own money to make sure that I have different kinds of protection. However, none of them are comfortable, none of them work, they don't work with glasses. And people are being shamed because of their masks that they're wearing and kids are too. And kids are saying it to each other. It's not the way we want our, our world to look like. It's not what we want our children to grow up in. I certainly don't want my grandchildren to do that. And when have we ever been afraid of a germ? I can tell you, working with threes and four-year-olds, I have germs all over me every single day. I have this, 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 everything. And when we walk away from the classroom, I'm probably covered in germs. My husband probably gets sicker than I do all the time because I'm coming home with germs that I have exposed him to since I started teaching. I haven't been sick in 30 years and yet I'm covered in germs every single day. We need some germs to be, stay healthy. And if we ignore this problem by putting a mask over our face and say it's not going to happen, I can still guarantee you, no matter how much I clean and sanitize, there are still going to be germs in my classroom. Unfortunately. I have one other point. My daughter's a travel nurse. She has been traveling the country for COVID. Her last four contracts have been canceled because there is not enough COVID patients to care for. She has been in every hotspot on the West Coast. She's been in Oregon, she's been in Washington, she's been in Arizona, she's been in Reno, Nevada. And every single one of her contracts has been canceled. She had less than six people at the hospital that, in the hospital she was just canceled at. The numbers are, seem to be hyped. She's hearing from the doctors that she works with directly that it's not as deadly and people aren't dying the same way that it was at the start. I think the disease is mutating, just like everything else is mutated. However, we're still living in fear and I don't want us to live in fear anymore. I don't want our children to grow up with that fear around them every single day. We need to stop talking about it. We need to live our lives and we need our children to be able to get out there and be children again. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody on Zoom? Anyone on Zoom? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kristi June, and I live at 476 County Road J in Hammond, Wisconsin. I come to Hudson a lot, I support this community, and I work in the Twin Cities. I have a science background, I have a bachelor's and a master's in biochemistry. So for any of those individuals that are concerned about people that are not educated enough or have that kind of experience, I'm here to try and help with that. I've worked in the medical device and pharmaceutical industry for over 25 years. I help with designing controlled environments, supporting air quality, water systems for microbial contamination, reducing pyrogen studies. So having a clean environment to support the manufacturing of implantable devices, combination devices, and pharmaceuticals is highly critical. While we wear personal protective equipment, all products get sterilized. I also support lab methodologies. And, and so when we talk about the tests that are used to test for COVID, it's a polymerase chain reactions method that is used to look for genetic material. A lot of those methods use a gel permeation chromatography technique. And this method is used to detect a lot of different diseases or viruses or bacterias out there. And I can tell you what, based on what I'm seeing, what I understand is the methodology appears to be inaccurate, which means that the results coming across, because of the inaccuracies, the test method itself is poor. For these methods to be used, the FDA requires certain guidelines, they must be validatable, they must be accurate, they must be robust. And based on some of the feedback that individuals have already shared, based on the inaccurate test results, I would confirm that those test methods, that particular one is not validatable, which is a requirement. So I'm going to throw up a couple other stats here. Did you know that the COVID virus is .12 microns? Do you know how big that is? Think about your ruler. It's .00012 of a millimeter. There is no way that a cloth mask has a porosity to filter out that level of a virus. Working in the industry, I have worked for filter manufacturings. We have one locally in Minnesota. I have been in that plant, supporting the manufacture of those devices, and I can tell you that they were not designed for this particular organism. The particles, all those filters are designed for larger particle sizes, and if you're wearing one, they are not going to prevent that from passing through or coming back through to you. There is a process in which all of these devices need to go through, through the FDA, and looking across the room, I mean, there's a couple people wearing masks, some are not, but I can guarantee you that any cloth mask out there is not going to help you. And the grade of, of masks that you might be wearing right now, I can guarantee you, I have them at home, and I see the warnings on those labels of those devices. Each one of those devices has an instruction for use, and they claim that overuse of those masks may cause, may, sorry, may result in illness and death. So lastly, I have teen children at home, a couple college students that have been forced to take COVID tests, one in which avoided going to a college because of that, they wanted to force two to three tests, mask required to wear, along with the flu vaccination, which we know is ineffective and certainly isn't effective against COVID. One of our family members is going to Iowa State University. There are 26,864 undergraduate students, all of which were required to take a COVID test. That is here within the last 30 days. That's one university. Think of all the colleges and the universities out there that are testing all these students. And as Jessica stated earlier, if anyone comes back with COVID per se, now they're required to take two more tests. Think of those numbers and how high they are, and overestimate what the true actual values are. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes. Hi, this is Carrie Rice at 1470 Lee Circle Hudson, and I'll make my comments brief. I am encouraging you to pass the mandate for masks, just to simply protect us. Someone that I follow is Dr. Mike Osterholm. He's a lead epidemiologist at the University of Minnesota. And probably one of the easiest ways that, that he's offered to think about this is that it, we're in the third inning of a ballgame. You know, it's called a novel virus because it's new. And we are learning some things that are different as this evolves, learning how to treat people when they come down with it. And he does recommend wearing a mask. I'll, I'll quote you from an article he wrote in July. He says, "Science, when well done, can be messy, imperfect, and slower than we wish. It's ever-evolving." In a time of pandemic, we wish that weren't the case. And I think all of us here, everyone, would like more certainty than we can possibly have at this point in this pandemic. But I do ask that you consider, there are a lot of us did not come to the room today, we feel, just as passionately as those who did. I'm hoping the people in the room are all wearing a mask, it sounds like some are and some are not. I'm also hoping that the council pays extra attention to the people from Hudson who are speaking, because it seems like we have a lot of people that have come from outside the city limits to express their opinion. So, you know, I, if any of you want to see this article, I'd be happy to pass it on to you and send it to you. But I, I do speak in support of putting the public's safety first, and I'll close with this, this comment. My nephew thought he was immune. He thought he was Superman. He's 41 years old, he's a huge, big dude, and he lives in Scottsdale, Arizona. And the week after Scottsdale lifted its restrictions, he and his friend Jimmy Flores went out and they had a real good time. And they both got COVID. They both got COVID-19. Now Nate didn't have to be hospitalized, but his friend Jimmy did and nearly lost his life. Nate is 42.
Hey.
Yes. So I, I share this with you because none of us are immune. My nephew thought he was. In fact, he sent me a text at one point, and he said, is this what we've come to, getting shamed if we don't wear a mask? And I said, well, as your godmother, Nate, I'm telling you to do it just as a courtesy. And he sent me back a note about a week later, saying, I wish I had listened to you. Now, that'll probably be the only time in his life that he'll admit that his godmother knew something he didn't. But, you know, I am asking and imploring that you pay attention to the people who aren't showing up in the room, many of whom I have shared as neighbors. I know an awful lot of people who are self-quarantining in my old neighborhood, and, you know, they're all over age 70, and, and they're frightened for good reason, and they're taking reasonable and careful precautions. So, you know, I would encourage, just as Addison did earlier, to pass a mandate that is temporary in nature, because none of us here are expecting that this is a permanent condition, and that we, we do it in the event that we can't get our state to be functional so, in, in passing and maintain reasonable precautions. So with that, I'll, I'll close out, and I, I see Joyce does want to see the article, so I'm going to send it to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jamie Huth, and I live at 973 Fraser Lane, Hudson, Wisconsin. I guess first, I'd just like to point out that I, I do wear a mask out of respect for other people, not because I'm afraid. Places that don't necessarily require it, then I don't feel the need to wear it. I don't think it works, and every single person in this room who does have a mask on or has, is wearing it incorrectly and has touched it repeatedly, which is what they are telling us not to do. Speaking to the Zoom fellow, Tim, who described COVID-19 as very fatal, and an early female who spoke early on, stating the startling cases, I guess, that we have in St. Croix County. I'm quoting these numbers from the COVID-19, what is it? Oh, St. Croix County Public Health COVID-19 Dashboard. So according to that, we have, as she spoke correctly, 684 cases. For St. Croix County's population, that's an infection rate of .75%. So, I mean, that's, that's on the county level. Our seven deaths, I have reached out to, oh, I've reached out to a lot of people, I think her name is Kelly Engen, Engen? So she reiterated back to me via email that all of those seven deaths have been over the age of 64 and had more than two underlying health conditions. So, and then also, those seven deaths are .0077% of St. Croix County's population. I guess I'd just like to close this out with a short little excerpt from Thomas Sowell, he's an American economist. Social theorist, he said it best in a speech of his about good intentions. If there was any, if there is any lesson in the history of ideas, it is that good intentions tell you nothing about the actual consequences. But intellectuals who generate ideas don't have to pay the consequences. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom? Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Carol Ivans. I live at 613 Nullwood Avenue in Hudson. And I've been wondering for a while, is this the first germ we've ever had on planet Earth? I, I just, I don't understand the overreaction that, that we have to this. I mean, it's not just the masks, it's, it's everything else. It, it just makes me wonder. And like somebody else was saying about having germs all over her, and actually, our immune system, oh, I forgot to say, I'm a registered nurse, so I did go to school for some scientific things, and I've had over 30 years of experience. So I'm not just talking through my hat, but our immune systems actually need germs so they have something to do, so they may, can make antibodies. And if you need proof of that, look at all the Americans who go to Mexico or India or something and get sick. The people in Mexico aren't sick because their immune systems have been busy. And our immune systems need those germs, and that's how we get herd immunity. You, you know, sometimes, people used to have chickenpox parties instead of vaccines, they worked a lot better, so maybe their kids itched for a little bit. And then they're also less likely to get shingles when they get older. So God knew what he was doing when he made our immune systems. And what we need is to support our immune systems and, and let them work for us. And then as far as masks, back in 2003 or '04, or whenever SARS came out, I can't remember, we were all fitted for the, the first version of the N95 masks, in case we had a SARS outbreak. And the way they fitted them was you had to stick them over your face a certain way, and then they sprayed something. And if you could still smell the smell, the mask was not on properly. Now, I'm sure that the N95s we have today are probably improved from back then, but still, it's, the point is, they're very difficult to fit exactly right, to keep out those tiny little SARS viruses. And if you're working with SARS patients, you need to have it on right, because that virus, as many people have pointed out, is so, so microscopically tiny, you can't even imagine. And that mask has to be fitted completely tightly. And when you're in the hospital, and you, we use those masks also for tuberculosis patients, you don't keep those on for more than 20 minutes, half an hour, depending what you're doing with the patient. And actually, I opted not to use the N95, because I was scared I wouldn't remember, I wouldn't get it on right, you know, when they're spraying that thing, that's one thing, but two months, six weeks, six years, whatever down the road when I'm using it, how am I going to make sure I have it on right? So I opted instead to use the, the Papper machine, which we already had, which is this big thing goes over your head, you look like you're a beekeeper, and it, you have a battery pack on your back, and you're all in a sealed-in kind of helmet-like thing. And that is really the only way to keep you safe from those microscopic little viruses. And SARS was the first COVID virus that we had. So I just want to underline for people who are wondering about, people who know anything about science or what the science says, you really have to have the right kind of mask. And the, the last thing I'm going to say is that what we learned in nursing school is that if something is wet, any microorganism, a bacteria, virus, whatever, can go straight through that substance. Well, when you're wearing the mask for very long, you're breathing warm, humid air onto it, it gets wet, so pretty soon, everything's going to go right through it anyway. So it really, it's going to do you no good whatsoever, and that is science-based. And I learned that long ago in nursing school, and it hasn't changed. Nobody's come out and said, oh, no, that's not true, in the meantime. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anybody on Zoom? Anybody else that would like to speak here?
Good evening, my name is Donna Rail. I live at 2234 Ruby Road, and just want to first of all, thank you for hearing all of our concerns tonight before coming to any decisions. And I would just like to ask that before our city declares a mandate for masks, that you think about some of the questions that I have, and obviously all of the perspectives that we've heard tonight here. And that's for, the first of all, what is the evidence that we're referencing to support the mask-wearing for everybody? For a one-size-fits-all blanket covering type of fix-it, what's the evidence that we're using? And then what is the threshold that this evidence classifies the mask mandate as necessary? If you don't have your baseline of what you're saying makes it necessary, how do you know when you can release it? How do you know when you can say it's done? And if that's not based on statistics or evidence, is it, what's it based on? Is it based on your feelings or your fears, anxieties? And when will that be okay, to say that we're, we've reached the point that we don't need And also, what do citizens do if mask-wearing poses a health threat to their own health? Do they need to disclose a diagnosis? Will they need to provide documentation? How would they, they'll feel alienated, and isn't that discrimination for them? And if the state and local government now is focused on citizens' choices for their own personal health choices, when will their efforts also include like health education and promoting ways of building and supporting a healthy immune system, and a strong immune system versus solely on methods that result in suppressing the immune system functionality? How, how are those efforts going to be implemented, and what do they look like? This pandemic has brought a lot of uncertainty and fear and anxiety for many, but again, the mask mandate of a one-size-fits-all blanket fix, it's just not the solution. And in comparison, you, like, there's other states- And in comparison, you, like, there's other states like South Dakota that has no mask mandates, never has, they have not done any lockdowns. And if you look at their active cases statistics, based on their population, they're at .34% that are infected currently. Their total cases are affecting 1.7% of their population. And in comparison to Wisconsin, our current active cases are 1.4% of the entire state. Our total cases reported have affected 1.5% of the population. And again, on CDC website, you can go and do your own research and I implore you to do that because you can make your own graphs, you can include the states that have higher risk, you can include states like South Dakota, which is way at the bottom of the numbers. You can go out and look at like Sweden, which has done nothing as far as lockdowns. You can also see our active cases in Wisconsin have really been on the decline since beginning of July, mid-July. So why now? What is constituting this for right now? And also, like, we've gone over that, I've heard others go over the statistics in St. Croix County also, whereas our confirmed cases, our active cases are at .15%, not even a quarter of a percent at this time. And then if you reference that, like, in infection rates of other viral infections in previous years, flu cases in Wisconsin in 2018, .3%. U.S. flu stats in 2017, '18, the infection rate was 13.5%. Currently, COVID cases have affected 1.8%. There was no talk of masks in 2017 and '18 and the infection rate was much higher, but there's no talk of masks. And again, this COVID is turning out to be that it's like, the survival rate is 99.9% chance of survival. But anyway, those are just some stats. Again, I encourage you to go out and look at all of them and other ones on your own, do your own research before making a decision that directly affects the lives of everybody in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Celeste Coburl. I'd like to make a public comment.
Who's this?
This is Celeste Coburl.
Okay.
My name is Celeste Coburl. I live at 870 Strawberry Drive, Hudson. Some of the speakers have been asking, what is the evidence? Well, the evidence is from the Journal of the American Medical Association, from multiple studies published in Nature, from multiple studies that have looked at the experience and the results in different countries and in different states and communities within the United States. And what those studies conclude is that the single most important factor in reducing the spread and lethality of COVID-19 that can be controlled is wearing masks in public. And it's not just a few percent reduction in the death rate, but up to 100 times lower mortality when you have near-universal mask-wearing. What are some of the criteria that we look at for when we need to take these actions and when we don't? Well, the public health experts, the epidemiologists, people like Dr. Michael Osterholm, say you look at the number of new cases per 100,000 in population. And when the daily average of new cases per 100,000 people of population is higher than 10, it indicates that the COVID-19 pandemic is strengthening. Well, those numbers in Wisconsin for over the past two weeks have been increasing steadily and they're all above a daily average of more than 10 new cases per day per 100,000 people. There are standards, that one tells us the pandemic is strengthening. Another one that public health experts look at is the percent positive of cases. And when the percent positive, I'm sorry, the percent positive of tests. And when the percent positive of tests is higher than 10%, then those public health experts and epidemiologists tell us that the pandemic is starting to get out of control. Well, in Wisconsin, over the past few weeks, the averaged, so it's smoothed out, daily positive test rate has been well above 10%. When do you stop taking measures? Well, when the use of masks and other effective public health protections manages to help our population get those numbers down. When our number of new cases per day per 100,000 population is less than 10. When our percentage positive in tests daily is less than 5%. Those are agreed-upon standards, they're set out in WHO, they're set out by the CDC. This is not stuff that people are making up. Studying epidemiology, controlling pandemics, that's what public health is good at. When the council is making its decision, it should be looking to that kind of expertise, not something that somebody just came up with on a Google search. I am speaking to urge you to approve the proposed mask ordinance. I agree that we should have leadership at the federal, state, and county units of government and not have to do this at the city level, but none of those units of government are stepping up, none of them have done anything yet. And so our local communities are left bearing the negative impacts from this pandemic. Your proposed draft ordinance, it's better than nothing. It doesn't impose any fines on anybody, it doesn't require the police to do anything new in terms of law enforcement, it just affirms that they have a duty to enforce existing laws against trespassing. It is a perfectly reasonable thing to do, it will be effective, and it is needed in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Celeste. Go ahead.
Wow. I hope she's not too disappointed with what I have to say. All right. So I do need to speak on, actually, there have been a couple people that have some...
Identify yourself, please.
Sorry, forgot about that part. I'm Jen Flanders. I actually reside out in the boondocks of Wilson, Wisconsin, still in this county. I'm here today as a concerned citizen. I was at the council meeting several weeks ago, so I appreciate that you've made the time to listen to us. I've heard several people quote some of the numbers I have here to show you today, but they actually misquoted some of the numbers, so I would like to address that. However, someone said that, I think you asked someone what, why they weren't working on this at the county level? Okay, they have been and that's where I've taken these numbers from. I'm also gonna quote some of what the epidemiologist has said. So at the August Health and Human Service Board meeting, the epidemiologist said that they don't count the numbers the way the state does. That is a quote. Okay? Later, it was explained to me when, at this time, at that time, this number right here called the cumulative number, which is what some people are quoting tonight as our current infection rate. This is not the current infection...
That number is?
This number is 684. That cumulative number means the number that we have had since March, the number of positive cases. The epidemiologist showed us some graphics that said that was the tested positive cases. However, then in small writing, oh, I don't think it has on now, I have several numbers here because this changed twice today. This is the current that it flipped to at 5 o'clock today or whatever. So this number she had at the meeting in her graphic was, in parentheses, also includes probable cases. That means if we all live together in a house, four of us, I test positive, you three are also considered positive because you're in the same household, whether you've tested positive or not. Okay? So that's 684 right now is not only confirmed cases that we have, but probable cases that we have in St. Croix County. This is only St. Croix County, okay? At the time that she quoted these numbers, she stated 441, I think it was, I thought I had it written right here, but, but her graphic said 341. So it was a difference of 100. That was, what she said was probable cases, that 100. So that means she took 1/3 of the number of actual confirmed cases and upped the numbers, saying it was probable, saying those 100 were probable. Okay? This is the amount of probable and confirmed cases right here. I blew it up a little bit here so it's easier for you to read from far away. Can you step this way a little bit?
All right, so I just, I just want you to, as you go through the numbers, I don't know that the camera's gonna be able to pick that up for the people watching on Zoom and we certainly can't see them up here, so you're gonna tell us what they are.
Oh, sure, so I'll explain each one. Okay, so then we have total recovered, okay? So our total recovered, here it's bigger so it might be easier to read, right now is 541. That means since March, 541 as of, actually yesterday, of the 684 cases have recovered. That means we only actually, as of yesterday, have 136 current cases in all of St. Croix That number is .157%. In case you don't do well with math, that's 157 thousandths of a percent of the population of St. Croix County, which is 90,687. We are at less or barely more than a tenth of a percent in St. Croix County, just of positive cases. That's not even deaths. And we're going crazy over that? We wanna lock people away, we wanna mask them, we want to stifle everything about our daily life for that number? Here's the number of tests that have been done, well, this is actually this number plus that number. So 13,547 negative tests since this all started. That means only 2.98%, basically 3% of the total tests that are done in St. Croix County come back negative. 3% are ne, or, I'm sorry, I was wrong. 3% are positive. 13,547 of the tests are negative, so that's 97%. 97% of the tests of St. Croix County come back negative. Now, we have had deaths, yes, we've talked about that, seven deaths out of 90,687 people. That is .00718810,000ths, that's actually a millionth of a percent, this spot right here. So we're not even at 1/100 of a percent yet in deaths. Okay? Now, here is where, this is just in case you think I'm kidding about the part where she said that this number, this cumulative number includes probable cases, that's what this little graphic is, is actually a screenshot or a picture of what she put up there that day. But here's the interesting part also that I found as I'm, as I'm doing this data here, looking at this, can you come here a second? This chart right here that shows, there's the orange graphs that are orange, these up and down lines right here that are kind of a darker orange. And if you can see at the very bottom, there's like a purple color, okay? And then you see a wavy, looks like a heartbeat rate going through it, okay? The orange, the darker orange or the red, whatever that color is supposed to be, is the number of people tested every day. This is on the St. Croix County website. You can't tell me if you look at this, you're gonna freak out, right? Okay? Positive numbers every single day, this dark number here at the bottom, those are what test positive out of those, all those tests. That's how many are positive. This wavy heartbeat line right here, that's the percent of positive cases, which is very deceiving because if you look at that, it looks like it's going with these numbers here that are the red, except that the number of tests done are done on this side in 50-case increments. So we've got 50, 100, 150, 200, 250, 300, okay? But over here, the percent of how many are positive are done in 2% increments, 2%. So if you actually wanted to give a line that showed what that line would look like, it would look like this. There you go. There's your line, okay? Thank you. So I want to share a few other things with you and I'll try to read through this quickly. I have tons of notes I could give you. Oh, I forgot one thing, though. Okay, so what this is really, this graphics that we get off the county website are just a bunch of propaganda. Now, for the lady that was on the phone a minute ago or on Zoom, I do do my research, I wanted to make that, to really engrain that to you because I know some people had said earlier that our numbers were 687 right now and they were looking at that cumulatively, okay? And if you took that difference of 100 that she said was probable cases and today our cases are 132, did I say, 136? If 100 of those are probable, then that leaves us with 36, 36 cases in St. Croix County that we're worried about. Even the number of deaths is so small, it's not insignificant. My grandfather died this week, I'll get into that later because I don't want to cry right now in the middle of this. I'm sorry, but there's no longer a crisis. Besides the fact that five out of those seven deaths have happened since the governor mandated That's over 73% of the deaths in St. Croix County have happened since the beginning of August because of an unconstitutional mask mandate that was implemented. In other words, people are dying because you and our governor say they have to wear masks and now you want to adopt an ordinance to make us comply with this? There's no longer a crisis. Besides the fact that, as someone said before, it goes against OSHA standards. You're holding the citizens of St. Croix County, of Hudson, Wisconsin hostage over a 98.89% survival rate. It's time St. Croix County and Hudson were opened and the residents hear the truth. It's been quoted that hundreds and thousands, hundreds of thousands of people are dying when in actuality, the CDC stated last week, the number is probably more like 9,600. So these were the stats of, as of last Thursday. We've had seven, so, sorry, I read that already.
You know, I just, can you wrap it up?
Yeah, I'm almost done. I'm almost done. So seven out of those, so the seven people that had died, just so you know, the two weeks before that, she quoted us that nine had died. So either we're raising people from the dead or somehow two people became undead in two So my actual, my actual problem that I have with this and that I find quite appalling is that not you, not the St. Croix County Board, not the Health Department... not the Health Department, not the epidemiologist has once suggested other ways to combat COVID in this area. Why aren't they encouraging various prophylactic treatments instead of trying to enforce actions that have been proven not to work, such as mask wearing, quarantining healthy people, and excessive use of hand sanitizer and disinfectants and social distancing? And I hate to break it to the lady that was just on the phone, but social distancing was actually a scientific, or a science project of a high school student and has never been proven to actually work. Social, why aren't we trying to make these treatments available to those less fortunate in this county? So many are hurting right now. Why aren't you suggesting that doctors have available to them prophylactic treatments? Dr. Kelly Victory says that could include, but not limited to, hydroxychloroquine, convalescent plasma, which was approved in the 1800s by the FDA against diphtheria, strengthening your immune system and common sense, vitamin C and zinc, healthy diet, sleep, regular exercise, sun, managing stress, fellowship, gathering with family and friends. It's time to take back our lives. Dr. Richard Bartlett of Midland, Texas, has had great success with budesonine, also known as Palmacort. If you have children like me who have asthma, you would know what that is. It's given via nebulizer, it's an inhaled steroid, and is used because it does not increase the chances of secondary pneumonia. It's safe for a two-pound preemie all the way up to the elderly, along with zinc, chloroformycin, an antibiotic for pneumonia and walking pneumonia. And the cost to the patient could be approximately $3 with their co-pay. A hospital outside of San Antonio, Texas, used this combination and emptied their ICU in 48 hours. Not just moved their patients to a different room, they sent people home from their ICU in 48 hours. I am tired of being lied to. I'm tired of being lied to by my county, by health professionals, by my governor. I'm tired of being told this virus is worse than it is. I'm tired of being threatened to comply with these illegal lies. We, the citizens, are done. Now, I told you before that I live outside of Hudson. I go to synagogue here, my daughter lives here, I grocery shop here, I go to the doctor here, I bank here. This is the town I come to, but I can guarantee you, if there is a mask mandate put in place, my money will not be spent here, and it won't be the only one. My grandfather died last Sunday. And I can tell you that he did not crawl on his belly through the jungles of Guam at the age of 17 because he went in early to fight in World War II in other countries for freedom that we are supposed to have here. I'm glad he's not here to see this because it's shameful. And I just have one more thing to say. Dr. Ashish Jha of Kitley, the KT Lee, I don't know how you're supposed to say that, professor of Harvard Global Health Institute, when he was told that the CDC was inflating the numbers, just like I quoted to you that our county epidemiologist is doing, said, "You've got to be kidding me. This is a mess." He called it a debilitating mistake. It's time we put an end to this. It's time that we all win about our lives. Thank you.
Yes, this is Emily Janisch. I live at 500 Autumn Blaise Trail, and I will make this brief. Just a few points that I'd like to make. We do not know the full effects of COVID-19 yet as it's only been around for a short period of time. However, those that have argued that they're not sure of the effects of masks when masks have been around for decades and have been used on many people, including children who have needed to wear masks for medical conditions. We have research, we have information on the effects of that that I believe are not nearly as severe of the effects of COVID-19. We've not been through a complete, full, excuse me, a complete flu season yet here where we live. I think it's important that we're mindful of that, especially with things like pneumonia and influenza that are only going to add to the mix of everything we have going on. They are going to suppress our immune systems. And perhaps those that don't have pre-existing conditions but perhaps are recovering from other, you know, flu or other colds or viruses that start to go around during the winter season, we're going to see a surge in this again. So not all people are getting tested from COVID either. I know for a fact that when people call in, there are some people, if you think you have symptoms or you've been exposed, you're being asked to stay home. So I don't think that these numbers are accurate. I'll agree with people on both sides of the fence with this. It's really hard to know what the real data is. I believe that masks are what are allowing for businesses to be open. This is so important. We have so many small businesses that we're able to go and support now. Because we wear masks, we're able to go in and support these businesses and not put these businesses, business owners and their employees at risk. The same way that, you know, we're able to send our children to school, if that's what we chose to do, we're hopefully mitigating the risks that these teachers and administrators are having to take. And lastly, I'll just say, as a mother with multiple children that are immunocompromised, I would ask that we would give my children the same respect that we do for kids with peanut allergies. We've found no problem over the years completely eliminating peanuts and nuts from our school system because we're not willing to take the risk that a child may die from a peanut allergy. My child may die from being exposed to COVID-19. They were born prematurely, they still struggle with respiratory issues. I've chosen not to send my children to school for that reason. I realize I have a choice. But my kids also, they're children. They need to be able to, you know, perhaps be out in the world and not feel like I'm going to go to Target and pick up COVID and bring it home and not know that I have it. So I'm just asking that we view this more from a community perspective. I realize we all want our independence and freedoms. I want that too. But there are just some things in this world that we have to view more from the perspective of being a community and being interdependent on each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Andrew, did you have something to say there?
No, sir, just showing support.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, sir.
My name is Randy Stoffron. I live at 740 112th Street in the town of Warren. And I'm here today to speak in opposition to a mask mandate. I'm opposed to a mask mandate at the city level, at the county level, at the state level, at the federal level. As I'm sitting here listening to all the speakers, a thought occurs to me as to, I'm just wondering what you folks are learning? What are, what are you getting out of this? We, we've been with this since March. We're in the seventh month of this. What I hope you would learn here tonight is that you've got an educated electorate. We're not sitting at home watching soap operas. These people are on Facebook, they're on social media, all over the place. They've educated themselves. You folks are educated. You know what's going on. This isn't even about COVID. If you were to make a decision to implement a mask mandate, it would clearly be an act of tyranny. You have, you've seen the numbers here tonight, but you've been watching them for the last seven months. You're not sitting around watching soap operas. You're educating yourself because you're public servants. You know what the numbers are. So what's this all about? Can you tell me? We're starting to ask the questions because we have been lied to over and over and over again. The people who are supposed to be defending our freedoms are taking them away. Now, you personally may not see yourself in that position, but we do because we see you as government officials. You represent our government. The fact that you've even put this on the agenda to talk about, I mean, I, it shocks me. It really baffles me. This is not about COVID. You know all about COVID, and it's not about COVID. So I have to sit, just like everybody else here, I have to sit and ask myself, what is it about? What is it about? You guys have any idea what this is about?
I don't care.
Yeah, we all know what it's about. It's about control and it's about resistance. It's about people taking advantage of a situation that has, has, it's a planned pandemic.
It's disruptive, obstructive, till and through the election. No, please let people speak without interruption. Respect the people at the podium.
Thank you. But anyway, it's, it's an effort on someone's part to advance an agenda. It's resistance to a current administration. It may be somebody that's interested in making a buck by pushing a vaccine or something of that sort. But it's, it's about control. And it's not, it's not about COVID because COVID's not the issue. I'm not saying it's not out there, it's there. It's obvious it's there. And there are people who are sick and there are people who have died from it. But the numbers absolutely do not support a state of emergency here in Hudson, in St. Croix County, or even in the state of Wisconsin or the United States. It's, it's, it's not about COVID. It's about something else, and we're educating ourselves to figure out what it is. But we're not going to stand for, for tyranny. We're not going to stand for anyone taking our rights and our freedom and our liberty away. Thanks for listening. I appreciate the opportunity.
Just one second. For anybody that has spoken already, if you could please move out of the room, we have a limit of the number of people that can be in here, and we're over that limit right now. And if you have, if we can't get back down to 10 people in the seats, we're going to have to start moving other people out that haven't talked yet and then take turns one at a time to come back in. And if we get some help kind of policing that, I'd appreciate it. Yeah, if you, if you want to watch this, you can still watch it on the TV across the street at the fire station.
So you can't even police your own road and you expect the police to hold city?
You know, um...
What's, what's, who's going to, who's going to enforce it?
We are right now policing it. You know what? We are trying to police. Look, I'm not going to engage you right now, sir, okay? So what we need to do, what we need to do is get a few more people out of the room.
I haven't spoke yet.
That's fine. But you know what? We had talked about this earlier on in the evening. As somebody speaks, they exit the room, someone else can come in. We're still a few people over...
They're socially distanced?
They're, they are not socially distanced.
What changed from an hour ago? Just curious, without disrespect. An hour ago, we had three times as many people in here.
I wouldn't say that that's accurate. I wouldn't say that that's accurate. You know what? And, and that's fine. I mean, if you think it did, that's fine. Here's, here's what, here, you know what? I'm trying to accommodate everybody here. You want to argue about it, we'll just shut the meeting down. I'm trying to, I'm trying to accommodate everybody here. I said everybody that wants to speak is going to have a chance to speak tonight. Okay?
Clearly, you've gotten agitated, so let's, we should, I agree, we should take it back down. But you seem to be the one agitated, so...
Well, I don't like, I don't like being questioned about that. All right? We had an agreement, and we want that agreement to be honored. I want the agreement to be honored. Okay?
Are we good? I'd like to go home too.
All right, is there anybody on Zoom? All right, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Linda Lewis, and I live at 654 Todd Lane in Hudson. Speaking to Emily Janisch that spoke a little bit earlier about her immunocompromised child, well, I have a child who's here and been sitting here all night, trying not to cry. She was born with a genetic condition. She has heart issues, and she suffers with anxiety. And I just want to put a face to this mask mandate because she, I want her to be protected too. And there is not data to say if a child with a heart condition wears a mask for seven or eight hours a day, what can happen to her? There's nothing. And right now, in how divisive this world is and how mean and cruel people are, people are wishing death on us when I walk in with her without a mask and with myself without a mask. And I suffer from asthma. And I try to do the right thing when I have to or if I have to go into a certain store. I try to choose businesses that don't have mask mandates, that don't harass me, that people won't harass me there. But it's getting harder and harder to do. And I don't think it's fair that we're wished dead, that we get the looks, that she has to live a life and a childhood in our world right now because she has a medical condition and that it's fair for somebody else to say that their child's life is important or that one COVID life is important but my child's is not important because she can't wear a mask? Because I can't wear a mask, but I do? And then I end up getting more medication and more doctor's visits? And my health is compromised because I try to wear a mask and I try to be polite and I try to be the helpful person? And I just think that this whole policing, you've got eyes everywhere and people judging everywhere and people condemning people and children on both sides. You could say she should wear a mask because she's susceptible to COVID. But on the other hand, is that mask going to kill her? We don't know. There's nothing out there to say what's going to happen. And we as parents have hard choices to make, but I think that there are choices to make. And they're hard ones. But please don't make it for me. Don't decide if my daughter's going to live or if her anxiety is going to get to her, if she'll be, have mental health issues because of it, because of people being rude to her out in public because she doesn't have one or automatically assuming she's a Trump supporter or I am. Doesn't matter if those things are true or not. To have that projected on to an 11-year-old who's in fifth grade? Our world is obscene right now. People are cruel. Please don't take this issue on at this level. We're having a hard enough time navigating it through ourselves, and we don't need more mandates that can potentially hurt even more and have death as a consequence as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to not recommend ordinance 15-20 or resolution 16-20.
All right, we got a motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Uh, we're getting kind of uncharted territory here right now, but we will have discussion. We haven't heard from any of the council members yet. But before I go to the council, I still want to see if there's anybody in here that would like to make a comment.
My name is Jim Dennison. I live at 608 Grange Road, the town of Hudson. I appreciate your time. I appreciate everyone staying so late here tonight. It's an emotional issue. We've all been through a lot. But I have a couple of things I want to, a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Where was all this concern? questions I'd like to ask. Where was all this concern in May? Because in May, I thought this crap was real, as a lot of us did. And I was damn concerned about it because I've had lung problems myself. Where was all the concern in May? Why is it reaching a crescendo now? We have all these other things going on, and the numbers don't justify it. So I have to understand why. Why now? Why not back then? Why not June? Why not July? Why not that beautiful month of August? Why now? Everything is a crescendo. And I agree with the gentleman who spoke before me. This isn't about COVID. It's clearly not about COVID. I keep hearing people say, out of respect for other people. Well, how about some respect for other people? How about some respect for your constituents? How about some respect for the kids that we're hearing about who are missing birthdays and aren't starting school on time? This was always the time of year where I heard about back to school. I haven't seen one commercial for back to school, anything. It's hurry up, get your kid mask time. Is it okay for your grandkids to miss their birthdays? I bet not. Is it okay to have Zoom funerals in your family? It's not in mine. That's a, it's criminal what's being done to this country. And if the media allowed us to see what's going on in the rest of the world, we would all see that the rest of the world is rising up and it's coming. And people will be held to account for their overreach and power, including all of you. So how about some respect for my ability to survive? I'm 57, almost 58 years old. I've lived through a bit. H1N1 damn near killed my wife and I a couple of years ago. Where was the mandate then? West Nile virus damn near got me, too, as did limes. But I'm still standing here. I'm still kicking. I grew up with lead paint. Mom smoked and drank the whole time she carried me. And by God, I might make 60. And I'd like to see your kids and grandkids make it, too. This is a hoax that's being put on us like I've never seen in my lifetime. How about some respect for my own sense of common sense? I've talked to more people in the last month in this, in this community, including the Thousand. There were big guys on Saturday, all in rally, for waving the flag. Enough bullshit, everybody said. More and more people have said to me, Jim, my common sense is the, I said, let it out. Let your common sense out. It's been talking to you for a long time. Let it out. Shut it from the frigging rooftops to your neighbors, too. Because you know damn well you were raised with more common sense than this circus that we're faced with. If it's not about COVID, if it was about our health, then Fleet Farm and the liquor stores would be closed. But they've been doing a hell of a business. No one wants to talk about the real issue. I won't sit here and debate with your callers who are a bunch of trolls online. Your admin should have done a better job. Some nasty stuff came across your screen tonight while some of your constituents and my neighbors were up here talking respectfully. And some real nasty stuff came across that screen. Somebody should have shut them down. It's easy to do. I work in tech. Nobody wants to talk about the real issue, but I'm done making pretend. I'm not good at it. I did that for 10 years with some family stuff prior to this, and my filters are worn out.
Yeah, he's insane.
People are rising up, and you do not have the legal standing to perform this mandate, as I understand. The city attorney's already told you as much. And I don't recognize it anymore than I recognize the overreach of our governor in Madison. I recognize him as our executive, but I do not recognize the overreach he's imposing and encouraging you down to push down to the community level because the Supreme Court struck down his first try. So my, the rest of my message is for the rest of you, and I heard this the other day, and it's a quote from a poem. Rise like lions after the slumber in unvanquishable number. Shake your chains to earth like dew, which in sleep had fallen on you. We are many, they are few. And they work for us. And you guys will be drug from office if you perform the acts of tyranny that are being suggested. So I like your suggestion that we just strike this, if that's what I understood. I didn't know the numbers. But I think the people of Hudson have had enough, and we can live our own lives without the nanny state. And you can tell who's going to vote which way in November by who's pushing mask mandates. Simple and plain, it's the truth, but no one will talk about it. We want to talk about viruses and bullshit. And it's about the election.
Thank you.
With, anybody, anybody on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom? Anybody else in here? And by the way, one more reminder, if you're in the fire station, want to have something to say, it's probably now's the time to make your way over.
I'm on Zoom. I'd like to speak.
All right, go ahead.
My name is Sonia Hall. I live at 757 Summit Lane North, Hudson. Many people tonight have already spoken to the statistics of the failure of masks, and many of those people have scientific backgrounds. I'm going to take a very different approach in my comments. I'm going to talk about our young people. I have two young men in college. One is a freshman, and one is a junior, and I will bring it right back to Hudson. Just give me a moment. So my freshman is isolated. All of his classes, despite his efforts to sign up for classes that would meet in person at least for an hour or two, he has zero in-person time. Everybody has to wear masks. They're totally isolated. My oldest, a junior, is a resident assistant, which means he leads multiple floors. Last year, he had 30 students. This year, he's in charge of 96. And he is desperately trying to give kids help for critical social connections. And their brains are still, remember, still developing. Remember that their brains do not develop until they're age 26. These kids, and I promise I'll bring it back, but these kids don't even have decent meal plans. They get to pick from, they have the same eight meals that rotate, and there are no plans to, to change that up for the entire semester. And I'm not even going to talk about our young children because mine are older. But our children desperately need social development. So how is this related to masks? Think of it as a pebble in a pond. If you start a mask mandate here, when almost every single person, and I don't know the percentage, I know somebody there is keeping score. I've been watching. Somebody is keeping score. How many of your constituents are speaking against a mask mandate? If you go against your constituents, it's, it's not just a pebble in a pond that, that expands beyond and beyond and beyond. It goes way beyond to becoming a boulder. And a, and a boulder that could be destructive, absolutely destructive. We need to work towards healing. We need to work towards doing the best for our most, our, our people that need us the most. And I fully support the motion on the table. And to create a mask mandate, I think sends absolutely the wrong message when all of your, well, I shouldn't say all. Please let me back up. When the majority of your constituents, constituents are speaking for so many reasons against it. Thank you.
Go ahead. Good evening. My name is John Kraft. I live at 1067 Eightieth Avenue in Warren, town of Warren. So I have office here in, in Hudson. I, as a few of the other previous, recent previous speakers, I definitely am in the camp of calling this thing out for what it is, which is a complete power grab. This is not about COVID. This is about control. And it's being justified, and rather than talk about all the, the details and argue, do masks work, do not, masks not work, the clinical details, let's just take a look at the ordinance itself. And as a couple of other gentlemen have asked earlier, what exactly is the goal? Yeah, I mean, what will it accomplish should you vote it in? But first, I'd really like to understand exactly on the city council, whose agenda item is this? Who, who, who are the council members who are asking for this to be, come up for a vote? Can?
It was Joyce, I believe Joyce and Sarah. Is that right?
Yes.
Good, you're still on.
I don't know if we're, I think we're in the listening mode now for the folks who are going. I think we'll respond to questions when we get to discussion.
Well, isn't, this is the dialogue portion, is it not?
Well, we've been listening for two and a half hours. We haven't had a chance to give.
Oh, that's what you're elected to do.
Right now, right now, actually, this is almost like a public hearing that we're doing. So we're, we're trying to hear the public out, and we will have a chance to respond when you guys are all done.
No, Paul, with all due respect, I'm running the meeting right now, and we have had interchange here with other, some of the other commentators, and I will continue to allow that.
Then I will say that I am in favor of a mask ordinance. I was one of the drafters of this in July, right before the governor came out and put the statewide mandate on. So I'm happy to take any questions as we get into it.
So Joyce Hall?
Yes.
Just want to get clear on, so we're talking three council members are the three that are pushing for this item to come up for a vote. I just want to know who we're going to work on getting voted out next time.
I'm gonna, well, that's not what we're talking about here, but.
If I may, since I was one of the people, I'd like to correct that. It's not that we were pushing for a mask ordinance. We wanted to have the conversation. It was, I feel that it's important to us and to the constituents. We are the leaders. It's important for us to address this important topic of COVID and how it's affecting our community's health, our community's economy, and the people that work here. So therefore, I didn't want to feel as though we were putting our head in the sands and ignoring the topic. It is a real conversation. It is, COVID is a real illness, and it's killing real people. And I felt that it was our duty to bring it up in a conversation and to hear from the constituents and from the people that visit and work in Hudson. So please don't assume that the desire for us to have the conversation means that we were particularly for or against an ordinance, but rather that we wanted to seek input and have the conversation.
Well, that's really interesting, since there is actually a resolution and an ordinance on the table potentially for a vote tonight. So I find that a little bit disingenuous. I also find it really interesting that all the people who are pushing for this aren't in this room. You don't have the guts to come and face your citizens. What's up with that? If masks work, so well, why aren't you here?
I have people at my house that are compromised. If I brought any, any virus home to them and caused them a fatality, I would not be able to live with myself. I have four people who are elderly, and I just cannot risk bringing anything home. That's why I can't go to a public meeting in, in person.
So let's shift gears a little bit. Thank you for that. Let's talk about the content of the ordinance itself. Number one, it's, it's, I'm trying to figure out what its actual purpose is, since it's got no enforceability whatsoever, even so, so right in the document. Really, the only item that relates to any enforcement is that businesses are expected to throw people out who refuse to wear masks and then, or get a trespassing ticket if they don't. So what happens to a business if they choose to not throw people out? Is there any ramifications for that? No, none. So what can the possible motive behind putting this particular ordinance in place be? It's certainly not about COVID. It's about creating more havoc in the community. That's what it's about. It's about a group of people pushing a progressive agenda, and I agree with the other folks, into the upcoming election, and to promote the chaos through the election. Because clearly, it's, it's not about the disease. It's, it's, it's not. It can't be. This thing has no teeth. It's not going to improve safety one iota because it's not enforceable. All it is, is a power play. So I personally will not comply. So if that means Jeff Willem's or one of his guys has to give me a ticket, I'll accept it. I'm suing the governor over this very issue. I am one of three people who are on the suit, pushing against Tony Evers' illegal second state of emergency on the same emergency. And we are fighting that on two grounds. Number one, that he doesn't have the authority to declare the second emergency. Number two, it's straight up unconstitutional. So should the council here choose to move this thing forward, and at some point it gets any teeth, it's just as unconstitutional as anything that this state or county is trying to do. So basically, I agree with the other two gentlemen. People around here have had enough. That was my event up at Jethro's Big Guys Barbecue last weekend. And we had lots and lots of people out there who are fed up and have had enough. And I fall squarely into that camp. So I won't take any more time. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you. We are going to take a five-minute recess. All right? We're going to get back to call this back into, out of recess. Hope everybody had a chance to get some coffee or some type of caffeine. All right. Is there anybody on Zoom that has a comment? All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dr. Shelby Hendrickson McGraw, and I practice downtown at 529 Second Street. There was someone earlier on Zoom that asked for a doctor, a scientist, or someone to talk through the science or talk through the numbers. And we've heard a lot of numbers tonight, and I think we can all agree that the numbers speak for themselves, right? We're talking like point 000018 percent. When we factor in, and that's for the whole United States, and then we factor in what the CDC came out with last week, that only 6% of the deaths recorded are solely COVID without comorbidity. So that's where I get the point 000018% deaths in America. Okay? And yes, death is a terrible thing. But we all know, sitting in this room, that we're all going to die one day. It's going to happen. Okay? So with that, that's very settled in my mind. What's not settled is what people like to say that the science is settled. Okay? Science, in and of itself, is never settled. However, what is true about science nowadays, and science, published science, is that you look at who funds that study, and that study's not getting published unless that study proves who funds it's narrative. Okay? And guess what? I think that a lot about, I think that's what's kind of going on here. Okay? Follow the money. You guys need to hold each other accountable for where is this coming from? Okay? I need you to ask yourselves, why did you become part of city council? I know why I became a doctor. I became a doctor to serve. I became a doctor to help the health crisis in this country. And this is BS. Okay? Just like several people talked about tonight, we don't talk about the proactiveness of boosting our immune systems. That is, it's insane that we don't talk about that. We, we talk about covering up our mouths. Our first line of defense is our mouth. Okay? We talk about social distancing. Our health comes through connection. We're human beings. That's what the science doesn't measure. We need connection. We need love. We need each other to survive. And right now, no, it's not what's going on. Okay? I see patients every day, upwards of 60 patients a day. Okay? What have I seen since this started? I've seen an increase in headaches and migraines. I've seen an increase in daily dizziness. Okay? Vertigo. I've seen an increase in brain fog, ADD, ADHD, people that can't concentrate anymore. Okay? Never had a problem before having to wear a covering on their face and on their mouth all day at work, all day inside, not getting fresh, fresh oxygen. Okay? Increase of fatigue, also a symptom of not having enough oxygen. Main thing, insane increase in anxiety and depression. That's the That's the pandemic. It is the mental health of this country. It is going down the frickin' tube, sorry. And it, my mental health is going down the tubes. Ask my husband, who's here at 10:30 at night, who gets to get up at 4:45 tomorrow morning to go to work, okay? What is this, you guys? What is this? What are we doing? It is, it is seriously insane, okay? And it's been hard for me to actually get up and go in to practice every day and see my patients and watch their health decline when I'm there to help it get better and to help strengthen them from the inside out. We don't get any of this from the outside in, okay? It has to come from here. Please, ask yourself, what are you doing? What do you want our future to look like? This happens now and it needs to, it needs to change. We need to change course now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom? Anyone on Zoom?
Can I have a handle? May I?
Sure. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Norden and I live at 1008 Eighth Street here in Hudson. I'm going to make it really short because a lot of what I was going to say has already been covered. I have one question. We've been told through all this to keep each other safe, to wear a mask to keep others safe. And I'm just wondering, what is safe? It doesn't seem to be able to be defined and that's troubling to me because we have a lot of rules and regulations that are being put out to the public to keep us safe. But we, I don't really know if we know what that is. And who defines safe? Who gets to define that? And who will determine when it is safe to remove the mask and why will it be safe then? My question, and I've, I've been watching world's health initiatives for about 20 years. And I knew that eventually it wasn't when this would, if this would happen, it was when. And so my thought, and there are many others that also think that the mask mandates are a place card for the vaccine for COVID. That's where the money is. That's where the billions of dollars are going to be made through the vaccine. So if we can get people used to being told what to do, they're used to being restricted from areas of life, school, restaurants, sporting events, whatever, without a mask, what is that going to be like when the COVID vaccine comes out? I have a feeling this is a place card for that and I'm really concerned about that. And I've had several different respiratory issues. I had H1N1 in 2009. I've had RSV in 2017, which was a 10-week recovery. Now I have Afib and some other respiratory issues that I have to be careful of, of my health. And I, I'm a massage therapist. I'm a wellness practitioner. So I really resonate with what's being said here about the immune system. I would definitely second that. That's what I, that's what I trust in. I don't trust in a mask. I don't trust in a vaccine. I don't trust in medications. That's my choice. And I would just say to you that the citizens can take care of ourselves. We are intelligent human beings. We have belief systems that need to be respected and honored. If we want to choose these things, we will. We will choose the health professionals and the scientists and all the experts and we will act on those beliefs. We don't need to be told what to do. We don't need government to take care of our health. We can do that. What we are asking you to do is to protect our freedom so that we can make those choices. Because this is America and we want to be able to have that freedom of choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? All right, somebody in here?
Councilmembers, Mayor, my name is Zach McCabe. I'm a chiropractor. I practice at 131 Carmichael Road in Hudson, Wisconsin. I don't have a statement. I do have some questions for you. Most of my statements have already been made tonight. So my question is this. Does any one or more council members possess credentials or education consistent with declaring and managing a community health emergency? And if not, who are you relying on locally to assist you in managing these emergency measures that does possess those credentials? Finally, what specific numbers or data points are you using locally to declare this emergency and manage it? And what numbers are you going to use to remove this emergency? If you don't have those numbers in place, quite frankly, you are encouraging, justifying, and validating any conspiracy you heard here tonight. Because without those numbers, all you're doing is gesturing. If you choose to make a mask mandate, will anything change? Probably not. If you choose to do nothing and I go to Menards, will I still have to wear a mask? I will. If I go to the Phipps, will I have to wear a mask? I will. If I have to go to the Purple Tree, will I have to wear a mask? I will. And I'll choose to wear a mask if I want to go into those establishments and spend my money there. And I appreciate a lot of them. But why not leave it to the business owner? Why make the business owner police this for you? I know you can't put those resources, city resources, into policing this. I am not policing it when people walk in without a mask. I assume they have a health reason. And because of HIPAA laws, I ask my other patients to refrain from commenting on whether they have a mask or not. And for, for that matter, for those of you at home who have been sheltering in place, if I can just give you an example of how my life has been for this COVID period. The doctors, there are three doctors, two doctors now actually at McCabe Chiropractic. And since March, we have put our hands on, because that's what we do as chiropractors. We are always within arm's reach of our patients. There is no six-foot adjusting tool. Upwards, hundreds of patients a week. Let's just, let's just put it that way. Up until the mask mandate, we wore masks out of a common courtesy for those who wore masks. If the folks walked in without masks, we did not wear a mask. In that period of time, it's been six months now, we have had no COVID, no COVID-positive staff members, no COVID-positive patients with those numbers. So just consider how effective a mask is. A mask may have value in preventing me from spitting on you or sneezing on you, but a mask cannot stop an aerosol virus. It's impossible. And someone mentioned Michael Ulsterholm earlier tonight. He was animate about that in June. You cannot stop an aerosol virus with a mask. He's changed his tune a little bit. He is pro-mask now, but it's for droplets, not aerosols. So my, my big question to you though goes back to, why would you, as a city council, in the county seat of a county who hasn't made a decision yet, make your own decision? It seems like a nonsensical gesture to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Dan Buckle. I live at 1286 Crately Lane, North Hudson. I'm a public educator here in Hudson. I work at the middle school as a school counselor. And all I want to say tonight is, the reason, there's, it takes a certain type of person to want to work in a middle school. A little crazy, a little nuts. We love our middle school kids. Maybe some of your kids went through Hudson Middle School in the 11 years that I've been there. That's gone from our school right now. I understand the masks have helped us to get back to school and we appreciate it as educators. We want to be there. We want to be with the kids. The masks that are letting us be in school are also taking away what makes the middle school special. If you could sit in the cafeteria, if you could sit in the classrooms and see, I have new students in my office crying daily because they can't meet people. They can't see people. They can't read people. These are not numbers. These are kids. These are not statistics. It's reality. It's what's happening right now. And furthering a mask mandate beyond what could happen on September 28th or not, in my opinion, furthers that injustice for our kids and it continues to hurt these kids. So I ask you to consider the human value of helping kids to get back to what we know is normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody else in here?
Good evening. My name is Debbie Craft and my address is 1067 Eightieth Avenue, Warren, Wisconsin. I would like to address the actual text of this ordinance. Your words matter. They're very important. And there are just some plain inaccuracies in the text of this that I think at a minimum have to be addressed before you would even entertain passing such a document. I'm looking at a long list of wheresthes about halfway down the first page. We've got a, whereas a novel disease with no certain immunity and no vaccination currently available, all of the population at risk. With no certain immunity, there's no certain immunity for any virus. Never has been. So I don't understand what you're trying to say there. Clearly, there is no certain immunity. And whether or not all of the population is at risk, again, I'd like to see data on that. How do you know that? I think that we could agree that there's at least the potential that people who have had it are no longer at risk. There's at least speculation that children are not at risk. That's a pretty broad statement that I don't think you can back up with evidence. The next one, whereas it is essential to use all available tools and as reasonable as necessary, some of my favorite phrasing, to stop the transmission of COVID-19. You cannot stop the transmission of a virus. It is not in your control. It is not in anyone's control. If that's what this is about, if what you're doing here is saying you're going to do whatever is necessary to stop the transmission of a virus, then I guess you're going to have to take all kinds of crazy measures because that is not ever going to happen. Have we ever stopped the cold? It's not possible. Is this ordinance trying to do the impossible? Moving down, the next one, whereas the state of Wisconsin, including but not limited to Wisconsin statute 323.11, 323.14, provides broad authority and power for local governments to order by ordinance whatever is necessary and expedient for the health and safety, protection, and welfare of persons and property within the city of Hudson in the emergency. I want to address that expedient issue, okay? We're seven months into it. This is not at all expedient. Okay? The issue of whether or not at the state level, we can even call this a state of emergency as it has already been declared a state of emergency and the required 60 days has passed, is a question. So whether or not you can say that you're going to do whatever is expedient for the health and safety and protection and welfare of people within our city is definitely a question. And if you're going to do whatever is necessary for that, why are we not doing other things to protect our citizens? Why is the only thing that you're doing punitive? Why is the only thing that you're doing requiring people to give up their constitutional rights and also assessing penalties for people who do not follow that mandate? Why are we not educating people? Isn't that within your purview? Isn't giving people information about how to boost their immune system and take proper precautions, especially if they have comorbidities, isn't that within your purview? Why is the only thing that you're doing mask mandates? Moving on. Whereas many individuals with COVID-19 are asymptomatic, yet risk transfer to others. Again, I'd like to see the evidence of that. That has not been proven and there is in fact studies and evidence to the contrary. So we need to see the body of evidence that you're using to make these assertions. I do not believe that you can back them up, but I would love to see that if you can. All right. Moving down to your whereas on June 28th, 2020, where you have the list of four things. Number two says cloth, cloth face coverings may help prevent people who have COVID-19 from spreading the virus to other. Number three says cloth face coverings are most likely to reduce the spread. So based on something that may help or be most likely to help, you are going to put in place a mandate that everyone must wear face coverings and will be penalized if they don't with tickets and monetary forfeiture and potential interference by the police. Isn't it true that you are required to do the least invasive and punitive things to protect the health and safety of the, of our citizens? Isn't that true? Aren't you supposed to start with the least amount of intrusion possible? That's a question. Anybody?
Yes, I mean, that's been established.
Okay, is this the least?
Vaccines are next. Mandatory vaccines are next.
You may be right. All right. Then we get down to face coverings should not be worn by and you've got children under the age of two, people who have trouble breathing, incapacitated, blah, blah, blah. There are also a myriad of other things, including those who suffer from panic disorder, autism, and other psychological conditions. It is also true that you cannot require anybody who has any of those or other conditions to wear a mask and you cannot ask what that condition is based on the American Disabilities Act. Furthermore, you cannot make business owners do that either. It's against the law. You say here that Hudson wants these visitors and our citizens to feel safe when they visit. How are you going to quantify that? How are you going to make people feel safe? We need to know what it is that you're planning to do and how you're going to measure whether or not people feel safe. It's an innumerable and an unmeasurable goal. If that's the goal of this, that cannot be done. And how are we addressing people feeling safe in other ways? If that is indeed your role to make sure that visitors and citizens feel safe, how are you making sure that we feel safe about the riots that are happening right next door to us? Is that being addressed? Is that really your intent here? Because if it is, there are a lot bigger things that we should be doing to make sure our citizens feel safe. I don't know about you, but little Antifa people start walking across the bridge here and I don't feel at all safe. I would like to know what our city council is doing about that. Finally, you say here, maybe not finally, you say that many businesses already require masks. True that. And others have indicated they would if the city requires them. Well, if the city requires them, what choice do they have? Are you saying that people have said that they will not defy your order? That kind of, yeah, would follow. But what proof do you have of that? How did you get that information? Did you take a survey? Who was surveyed? Was it a representative sample? Was it a representative sample? How big was the sample?
Can you wrap this up?
I can. I want to know what the time limit and the criteria for ending this is. If you're going to issue a mask mandate, what do we need in order to say we're done? Because right now, it's completely open-ended. So before you put pen to paper on this, I think you need to come up with some evidence and be able to back up what you say. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Wood.
You know, just one last thing. Obviously, it's getting late. The timeline is really testing the leniency here of the council, so we asked originally to keep it as concise as possible, if you could do that.
Yes, I will. I just have something to add. I live at 1114 Partridge Lane in Hudson. And I just wanted to add, Debbie was talking about safety, and my daughter was the one who worked at Bread Art. She didn't go into details, and what happened was a gentleman came in, he wasn't so gentle, and was upset about wearing, not having, not, he didn't want to wear the mask, and he was very rude and lewd and verbally abused her as well as the other female baker that was there, they were there alone. There was, well, there was another family there with a four-year-old boy who witnessed all of this as the vulgarities were pouring out. So when I went to get some pastries a couple of hours later, she was still shaken up about it. So that's what would happen here as well, you know, it's just right across the river. So that's not very safe for, you know, a 16-year-old to have to experience when you put the onus of, you know, mandating the mask on the small business owners. And also, I just also wanted to point out, I am one of those people that have a medical exemption, and I am a real person, by the way, and it does not feel that way when I feel like I'm getting pushed out of my own town. And I will start shopping in other cities if that is the case.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody on Zoom? All right.
Hi, my name is Jesse Constance. I live at 50 Nicholas Way in Hudson, Wisconsin. I also work downtown, right down here, and I've been here for three years now. I left Minnesota, they outlawed my business, so I had to come here, and I was welcome, it was a thriving community, and I saw a lot of business. I've also seen the businesses suffer down here since Evers shut the state down, and he's continuing to try to shut the state down. So businesses are hurting, and a mask mandate wouldn't do anything to help business rebound. Plus, a mask mandate goes against our freedom of choice for our medical care. We have, we have the Nuremberg Code given to us after the Nazis performed medical experiments against people's will. Experiment is defined as a scientific procedure undertaken to make a discovery, test a hypothesis, or demonstrate a known fact. And the Nuremberg Code says, for permissible medical experiments, the voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. I do not consent. I'm not going to wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody on Zoom?
My name's Jeremy Jones. I live at 4 Berkmost Park Lane here in Hudson. I'll be real quick. I'm speaking directly to the four members of the council who came in here thinking this mask mandate was a good idea. An overwhelming majority of the people in this room, at the fire hall, and even on Zoom have all been against this, and they've given multitudes of reasons stemming from constitutional government overreach, masks don't work, the negative effects of masks on human health. As your job or as a city council member, your job, you are a representative of your constituents. It is plain and easy to see that an overwhelming majority of your constituents do not want this. If you vote for this, you are, you're doing it for all the wrong reasons. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody here?
Yeah, hi, my name is Joff McCarthy, 920 Chippewa Path, Town of Hudson. I'm self-employed, and all these rules about this virus sham, you guys aren't thinking about people's businesses, you're not thinking about the self-employed, you're not thinking about the guy that had to take a first or second mortgage on their house to get their business going, to keep it afloat, that had to take a loan out. And because of your mask crap and other stuff that goes along with it, now that business may not be able to open up, many of them haven't, many of them will not. And then you try to control them by, you can only have 25%, 50%? No, a business needs to be open 100%. Every job is essential. Every business is essential. Everyone working is essential. And you better realize that. You guys get your paycheck from government regardless of what happens. Us in the public, we do not. If you're self-employed, you're paying everything. You get no help from an employer. And if you make these places wear masks, my wife's the same way, and all of our friends. We go into a place, they want you to wear masks, we don't go there. There's great restaurants, great shops in Hudson. You put the stupid mask mandate in, know what? We're not going to go downtown Hudson and shop, we're not going to go downtown Hudson and eat. Then that affects all other suppliers that supply those businesses. So it's about time you all start thinking about, you work for us, we do not work for And you better get that through your thick heads. All businesses, all people's jobs are essential, and you do not mandate that. That's an employer-employee relationship. And yes, this is a big power grab. It's pretty evident. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hugh Gwynne, 907 Cooley condo 106. I've lived in Hudson all my life, grew up on the North End. To those council members who are not present, and one that is, I've known some of you all your life, and I know your parents. I have lived here all my life, other than being away for college and law school, and came back and joined a downtown business that had been on the same corner since the I grew up on the North End with a sense of community and respecting your neighbors, their property, and their wishes, but also with independence. I think what this ordinance is doing is virtue signaling with no enforcement or other reason. As a former municipal attorney who's represented a number of municipalities in the county and a school district, the way the ordinance is written, I have serious qualms about as to questioning what the real intent of it is, and that it's really unenforceable. It also takes away the sense of community, of respect for each other that I grew up with in Hudson, and I hope is still in here. I see no reason for the city to go down this road at this time. I've listened to a lot of speakers tonight on Zoom and decided I needed to come down here and speak personally. I think we're going down the wrong road. I think we're sending the wrong signal. If you respect your neighbors, and somebody has a health issue and they ask you to wear a mask, I think out of consideration, you should. But I don't think it's the place of the city of Hudson to mandate that you must and that there are some unenforceable consequences for it. Again, I see that as virtue signaling, and it is not going to accomplish anything. Paul, you're my alderman. During your campaign, you indicated that you would listen to your constituents and be guided by them. I'm one of your constituents. I see no reason to adopt this at this time with the conflicting science, and I say that in quote, "evidence" that we are hearing. It is so all over the board that I'm not sure what we can rely on. I've learned tonight, at least from some of the professionals, that the masks I'm wearing aren't going to do anything for anybody in preventing this, and I'm not sure where I'm even going to get a mask that would accomplish what the alleged purpose of this is. I know that this has been an issue that your friend Roy has pushed at the county board level, even though he's no longer on the county board, and I suspect that it has its basis with him at the city of Hudson. It's, I think, a political ploy aimed at a certain base that may make you feel good, but I don't think it's going to accomplish anything about making anybody safe unless we all run around wearing hazmat equipment. If a business downtown wants to ask their customers to wear a mask, I think that's up to them and how they run their business. They need to be independent. They don't need the city of Hudson telling them what they can and cannot do in their independent business when it appears that this mask ordinance really won't prevent any of these very small micron-sized virus droplets to be screened by the mask. So it's really not going to accomplish anything as far as keeping us safe. People may feel they're safe, but it appears they're not going to be safe. I think this is contrary to the Hudson I grew up in, with a sense of community, with a sense of respect for others. And if I go to a business and they ask me to wear one, if I like the business and want to go there, I will out of respect for that business owner. But not because the city of Hudson has decided to take away that liberty from the business owner or from me. That's not part of what the city function is in my humble judgment. It's nanny statism, which is not going to accomplish the nebulous goals that have been tried to put into this ordinance. So Paul, as my alderman, I'm saying do not vote in favor of this. If you're listening to me, I don't know how many other people have commented to you, but that would be my recommendation to the council and to all of the members, because I think it sends the wrong message of a sense of community and a sense of togetherness, and the ordinance is actually going to be very divisive within the community, which I think most of you have talked about bringing everyone together, and I see this as accomplishing none of that goal and will be, have the absolute opposite effect. Thank you for staying all night and listening to all this, but I would ask that all of you support Randy's motion at this time and either table this or have it die.
Thank you, Hugh. Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Is there anybody else here that would like to comment?
Thank you for being patient with us. My name is Corey Pearson. I live at 416 Red Brick Road, Hudson, Wisconsin. I'm a homeschool mom of three children under seven years old, and I'm asking you to consider how this mask and social distancing mandates are negatively affecting our children and students. I was supposed to be one of the pre-K and kindergarten teachers for our local homeschool co-op this year, and I was really looking forward to it. But when I was told I would have to enforce the four and five-year-olds to wear a mask, I could not in good conscience comply because it's developmentally inappropriate, and these are completely unnatural behaviors for these young minds and what they're learning. I would not have been able to connect with my students who rely on seeing my lips and my facial expressions. Because of these strict mandates, we no longer are able to meet together in person as a co-op and learn and socialize in this way together, so we have to find alternate ways of socializing. And I know for myself and other educators, I want to create a caring and creative and emotionally safe environment, and how do masks help foster these positive learning environments? They don't. I believe it stifles learning, it's a distraction, I believe it causes frustration and anxiety for everyone. We do not want to influence children with unnecessary fear, worry, or the constant feeling like they're always doing something wrong. And this is what we're doing, having the masks and always policing all the children. It's teaching our children to fear and to judge others, and it's dividing us. So please consider our children and students, and do not extend these mandates and put further psychological, mental, and emotional damage on our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? Have you spoken yet?
I have, it's still taking under a minute.
All right.
Thank you. Again, Sarah Bachland. I just wanted to say that I was glad that Debbie spoke to the wording in the proposed mask ordinance, because I was looking at it, and I hope that you four get another chance to look at it as well. And we will hold you accountable for your words. I think we have addressed the flaws in your assumptions in this ordinance. In the very least, I hope you have serious doubt in your mind as to the, I don't know what I wrote there, as to the something of your, the, validation of your whereases in the ordinance. Therefore, this should not allow you to declare a state of emergency in our city and for and furthermore nullify this entire document. And if we are left with a nullified document, there is no option left but to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council. We've got a motion second on the floor. Discussion?
I just want to say that the responsibility for one's health belongs to the individual or the family, not the government, and certainly not by those with no formal education in the health field or not backed by scientific facts. Those that are concerned are free to wear masks, social distance, stay at home, take actions that they deem necessary for themselves and their family. The CDC has now acknowledged that as many as 94% of the deaths assigned to COVID-19 resulted from other pre-existing conditions. Why is, out of our population of 87,000, which now I believe is 90,000 from earlier numbers, St. Croix County was seven deaths? And any death is tragic since we closed in March in an emergency. Our hospitals are not overcrowded. There's one patient within St. Croix County hospitalized and two outside of the county. There needs to be a shift in the focus from COVID prevention to addressing the side effects. Hurting economy, families losing their homes or businesses, increase in substance abuse, depression, and the suicide rates are through the roof. The overreach by some of the council members must stop. Overwhelmingly, I have heard the citizen rebuke this efforts and not to pass an emergency order or mask mandate. Overwhelmingly, more than any other issue in 15 years, have they said no to this effort. That speaks volumes to me as this is a representative government with us working for our citizens. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, you know, I rely on several factors on weighing decisions at city council. And these aren't in any order of importance, but I rely on city staff. I rely on various city-led committees and boards for information and recommendations. I rely on information gathered from subject matter experts outside of the city staff, and I rely on feedback from constituents. The mask issue, put plainly, is a health-related matter. We do not have any city staff who are first in health matters. Because of this simple fact, we don't have boards or committees set up to do the deep dives into the issue. And in my conversations with healthcare leadership in our community and beyond our direct community, I have not received one request to mandate by law a requirement for masks in our community. It's my firm belief that these matters are for county, state, federal government to address because there are subject matter experts staffed in those bodies of government. It's not me passing the buck in any way, shape, or form. This is me saying that without subject matter experts on staff, I, as an elected official, am less effective in answering the vital questions such as these. What parameters will be set in a mandate in terms of beginning and its end? What health and COVID-related data sets will be reviewed? How often will they be reviewed? Who will review? How will these data sets inform policy in regards to masks? And who will monitor CDC guidelines? And who will work, you know, as we heard tonight, you know, with Dr. Olsterman talking about, you know, this is a moving target, right? This is, we're getting updated information all the time. We don't have staff that are looking at this. But at the county level, the state level, and the federal level, those monitorings are happening. So I believe that the place for this decision is not in this body of government. And so that's my opinion on it.
Anybody else?
Just a practical question, Mr. Mayor. How late are you willing to go tonight?
We, and during the recess, it had been brought up by Councilmember Alms that maybe he wasn't the only one that he was thinking about requesting that we postpone the rest of the agenda for another time. So, you know, we'll finish this discussion, take the vote, and then probably adjourn.
Okay.
It's been a long night.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I don't have a prepared statement like some other folk because I really want to come here to primarily listen tonight. And I really appreciate all the folks coming out. I think it's been a great show of participation in democracy and local government. Excuse me. And so I appreciate the passion of folks. I appreciate the interest. I appreciate the numbers that showed up, both online and in person. So I think that's a real credit to all those folks. That said, I have to be honest. I'm still in favor of a mandatory mask ordinance, and let me explain why. First of all, I understand that a lot of people feel it's an infringement on their rights, and I get that. I've heard the word "constitution" come up several times tonight. And I don't see anywhere in the Constitution of the United States of America or the Wisconsin State Constitution where it says somebody has a right to not wear a mask during a global pandemic. In fact, what the Constitution says in Article 1, Section 8 is that Congress shall have the power of defense and provide for the general welfare of the country. I think this is clearly a general welfare issue. It's a health issue. So I just want to try to put that a little bit to bed because I think there's been a lot of misinformation about that tonight. And in the general public, I think people are not educated somewhat on the Constitution. So I'm throwing it out there. Point two, I think, is the Wisconsin State Statute, 323.11, declaration by local government. It clearly states that the local government does have the authority to do what we're doing tonight. And it clearly states that health is one of the reasons that a local unit of government can take what are extraordinary measures. I get that they're extraordinary measures. So it's clearly legal. I want to just say that it's clearly legal under both Wisconsin State Statute and I would say the U.S. Constitution. So that's a big point. We've heard a lot of -- I just am going to say it. I think we've heard a lot of bad science tonight. People doing a lot of their own research online and coming up with their own ideas. The best, and I think Alderman Alms is right, none of us are experts on this, so I get that. We have to rely on the experts in the United States of America, and that's the CDC. And the CDC has been consistent. We've learned more about how the virus is spread. We know it's primarily through droplets and through the air. We know that masks work. We know that social distancing works. We're not living in the Middle Ages here. This isn't bubonic plague. We understand how this disease spreads. And it's a very serious disease. And I know a lot of folks tried to explain that away tonight by looking at numbers. And I heard a few times that only seven people have died, and maybe they were older. But you know what? I think all life is sacred. I think all life is sacred. So seven is too many for me. And folks were wondering about benchmarks and asking about benchmarks. When I was going through this in May, I always said, if it hits four or five deaths, that's too many. We got to take some action. The reason we didn't take some action this summer and why we're talking about it tonight is because in July, when this was coming on the agenda and we had prepared this ordinance, was the same week that Governor Evers put a state order mandate in. And I'm grateful he did because I think that will save lives. And that's what we're really, I think, supposed to be most interested in. Couple other points that I think are really important today. I've heard a lot about business. I served on a committee to get Hudson businesses reopened in conjunction and led by the Chamber of Commerce of Hudson. Those businesses that were on that working group, they wanted a mask ordinance. Those businesses understand that if there is a mask ordinance, then they can continue to stay open because jobs are important. And I heard that tonight, and I agree. That's why I voluntarily served on that committee because I want to make sure we stimulate the economy, keep people's jobs, keep people's livelihood. And masks are one of the most important things in order to do that. They don't attract from business. They're going to add to that. In addition, I'm going to mention I'm a teacher. And we've been in school for two weeks at my school. And all of us wear masks every day. And middle school and high school kids can do it. I haven't had one parent complain to me. They understand they want to be in live school. So they're taking the mask-wearing very seriously. In addition, so what I'm trying to say is in Hudson, it's really important for our schools, our schools as they open, that we model this throughout the city. I think that's huge. Masks are going to keep the businesses open and the schools going, which I think is a real huge public interest, common good issue. There seemed to be a lot of talk about minimizing this virus. This is not the flu. I know there's been a lot of misinformation. I know there's cable news stations that say this and say that. I've heard a lot of tonight, people questioning the council's motives. And quite frankly, it's disrespectful. And it's made me a little angry tonight because people keep saying, what's the real issue? What's the real issue? It can't be COVID. Well, I got news for you, folks. It's COVID, okay? It's COVID. We sit here as elected officials trying to make the best decisions we can for the common good, for the public welfare. That's our job, okay? I've also heard people say tonight, we're going to vote you out of office if you put this ordinance through. Wonderful. I would love to have somebody challenge me because nobody did last time for any of the council members that ran for the last two cycles. So I have no qualms about getting out of office. I'm not in office to hold an office. I'm in office to do the right thing. And clearly, the right thing in this case is to protect the common good, promote the general welfare, protect the people of Hudson, Wisconsin. That's what this whole thing is about, okay? The thing I compare it most to is the indoor smoking ban that the state of Wisconsin put in 10 years ago. So more than 10 years ago, you could smoke in an indoor area. And there was a lot of debate at that time. Oh, if you make this illegal, it's going to hurt businesses. It's going to hurt bars. It's going to hurt restaurants, okay? It's going to hurt, you know, our freedom to smoke. So what did Wisconsin do? Wisconsin put into place laws to ban that. And 10 years later, our bars are doing great, pre-COVID, obviously. Our restaurants are doing great, and we don't hear the arguments that we need to smoke. That's the closest analogy that COVID-19 presents because somebody's smoke can bring on cancer or lung problems for somebody else, just like somebody's breath with COVID. There seems to be a lot of misunderstanding tonight about why we're wearing masks. People say it's to protect themselves. It's really to protect other people. What you're trying to do is you're trying to keep your -- if you're infected, you're trying to keep it to yourself, basically, through your droplets. So contrary to what we've heard tonight, it's pretty effective. And if you don't believe me, go to the CDC, and those are the folks that have the research. Oh, question about government overreach. I get that. None of us want to do this. None of us love the position we're in, okay? We've had a failure of the federal government, and we've had a failure of the state government in Wisconsin. Other than Governor Evers' orders, we have literally no direction right now from either governmental body. In fact, Republican leaders in the state are saying to us, we want these decisions made on a local level. They want them made on a local level. Well, it's as local as it gets, folks. So we are entrusted, and we are following the direction of our state leaders who are saying, we want you to make a decision on a local level. So that's why we're dealing with this tonight. The other thing that's been some, I think, some misunderstanding about is that -- I think somebody took over the screen.
Your back, Paul.
Okay, so -- I lost my train of thought. I apologize if I got the interruption. I get the folks that talked about some of the difficulties with the draft for the ordinance. I understand that. I worked on this ordinance when I was actually on vacation this summer, and then our lawyer drafted the piece that you see there. I'm not sure it's the best language. I'm not sure there's -- there might be a better way to do the last part of it, which is the enforcement piece. Governor Evers had the $200 fine. This one has a trespassing kind of piece in it. I'm not convinced that we should necessarily keep the present language. It might be better for us to go to some sort of a fine in terms of violation. The other thing I want to say is there's a lot of angst, maybe is the best word, for folks that don't want to wear masks. And I get that. And I think that the ordinance has written there's a lot of exemptions. So if you read the ordinance, there's all kinds of exemptions for medical reasons, for psychological reasons, for, you know, ages of children. It's not 100% across the board like some people prescribed. And are there enforcement issues? Yeah, I think that's difficult. I think it would be difficult for our police department to enforce as it is. I get that. We would have to talk about maybe creating some way of doing it better to support businesses. But it's probably not a perfect ordinance. I totally admit that. But the question becomes, is it better than having nothing? And we know how the virus spreads. So in my mind, yeah, it's definitely better than nothing. The other thought I just want to throw out there, and then I'll let other council members speak, is I keep thinking of John F. Kennedy tonight. I keep thinking of John F. Kennedy's inaugural speech where he, you know, talked about, ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. And I heard a lot of stuff about my needs tonight. I heard a lot of that. But I want to challenge folks to say, this is about America. This is about Hudson. This is about doing it together. And my sense of community is based on this. It's respecting and working together. We are in the midst, probably the third inning I heard tonight, and I thought that was a good analogy. We're in the midst of a global pandemic. We're in the third inning. This is not the time to let our guard down. We are in this together, and the only way we're going to get through this as a community in Hudson is to work together. This ordinance was also called divisive, or people were afraid it was going to be divisive. That's not the intent. The intent is actually to get us all on the same page. Personally, I felt a lot better since Governor Evers put the state order on. When I was traveling, I went to Montana. Montana has a state mandate. South Dakota does not. Wyoming does not. I felt 100% more safe in Montana. So the problem is we don't have -- the state order is expiring September 28th. We definitely need to take action. Am I convinced the wording is 100% good? Not necessarily. I also don't think we need to vote on this tonight. I have no problem with trying to table this and come back in two weeks with some new language. But we have to get it done before September 28th. So there's no necessarily need to act on this. And that's why I really appreciate the citizen input because I think what that does is it helps us to create a better ordinance. So I'll let it go at this point, and thanks for listening.
All right, anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to say a few things. Well, first of all, thank you, Paul. I agree with everything that you said. I think that I don't need to repeat things. I did have some remarks prepared, but I'm not going to do the lateness of the hour. But yes, this is supposed to be to protect other people. And so it is supposed to be an unselfish act of wearing a mask. And I believe that we do still need the mask ordinance. So thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, assuming that Tim's going to want to speak too, but I guess I'll go first. I also had a prepared statement, but for the sake of the hour, we'll just maybe go with -- I also had a prepared statement, but for the sake of the hour, we'll just maybe go through it at some higher level points. Paul, I agree with much of what you said. Well, first of all, I'd like to back up and want to restate that I don't think this topic was on our schedule tonight because of a power play or control grab. Let me just restate that I do think that we are, we are the lead, we are leadership of the city of Hudson, and we have a duty to discuss this topic. By not by not talking about it, I felt as though we were ignoring one of our, maybe not ignoring, but putting off one of our obligations. I also received many, many emails in addition to the conversations that were in, you know, in the room tonight and on Zoom, and I want everyone to know that although I wasn't able to respond, I did read each and every one, and I've considered each, and and the few calls as well. I think a lot of great points were made, and I'm hearing a lot of the same concerns that that Paul listed out. Mostly, you know, the the thinking that stands out to me the most is that this is some sort of control or power grab or overreach, and it is simply not. I I think that what we want, what we want to try to get under control is COVID-19. It, the longer that it remains part of our our reality, the longer it has a terrible impact on our business, our financial, you know, all of the things that people are complaining about. It was hard, it's hard on business. It will continue to be hard on business. It's hard on our schools and our children. It's going to continue to be hard on our schools and children until we can successfully find a vaccine and cure. It's going to continue to wreak havoc on all the things that we know and love about being in this great country. That being said, we are not scientists. We are not the people who are are coming up with the vaccines or the or the cures, and we are citizens, and we, you know, as citizens, need to figure out what is our part? How can we help stop this spread? How can we help get back to business as usual? This pandemic has caused a life loss in America of, I think, it's up to 189,000 people. Think of all those families when you lose a loved one. Someone mentioned that, you know, it was impacting old people. Well, the the, we got a report, maybe it's not on the CDC, but our city administrator sent it out today, and while they were speaking, I did the math, and it turned out that of all the 634 cases, 684 cases, 50, only 50 of our cases in St. Croix County were people over the age of 70. So that was, that means 93% were were less than 70 years old. So it's not, it's not just the old and the and and the people with compromised systems. A lot of these people were were in their 20s to 50s and young and healthies who did get the get the COVID. So I hate this pandemic. I hate what it's done to my household. I hate what it's done to my community, our community, our country, in fact, the whole world. I hate also the impacts it's had on our culture, on our nature as humans to want to be in social settings and communion with others. I hate the financial implications. I hate what it's done to our healthcare systems, small businesses, hospitality, construction industries, you know, every industry has been impacted, caused jobless rates to skyrocket, instability in our housing markets. You know, it's, you know, it's wreaked a lot of havoc, and by having this on the agenda, I just was hopeful that we could find a role that we might be able to play in gaining power over COVID, not over people, but but over this actual struggle that we face as a as a community. So I think it's time for each of us to do our part to turn it around. I was in strong favor of considering the ordinance that would encourage everyone to wear masks, not mandate. I do think that we still need to return to looking at this down the road. Well, it's a couple weeks away that the state mandate is going to expire, you know, and we just started back at school. We don't know what that's going to do to numbers. The weather has just turned. We're going to close our doors and windows. We don't know what that's going to do to numbers. I don't think that it's time to say that we're not going to talk about this again. I think it's time to say, let's watch what's going on. Let's fine tune the ordinances so that if and when we need them, or we feel like we need to implement them, that they're ready to go with language that is more acceptable to a larger number of people, and and be ready if and when the time comes, that that things get far worse and take a terrible turn for the worse in St. Croix County. With that, I'll turn it over to anyone else on council who would like to make a comment.
Anybody?
There, got my, finally got my mic on, back on. Jim Weber, some really nice statements there. Some of it sums up very well. I can't help but to address some of the facts that that were thrown out. The implication was that the flu is way worse than this, so I did a, I did a fact check on that. CDC information is flu death rate is 0.1%. COVID death rate is 5.2%. So you want to think about how dangerous this is? That's that's the information that we're working with. We currently are in testing in both Wisconsin and Minnesota, running about 13 to 15% of the tests showing as positive results. That's very high, much higher than it was. I remember the first testing that was done here, done in the St. Croix County, it was incredibly low, less, way less than 1%. I did, I ran the numbers. I couldn't believe how low it was. And so it's gone up, and that is one of the characteristics of the states that have had the severe problems of Texas, California, Arizona. That's the kind of chain they get into. People talked about at-risk people should stay home to be safe. Let me back up. First, for the purpose of wearing a mask, and the thing that it has an impact on is the person wearing the mask doesn't spread the disease as readily. It's not perfect. You have to have really, really good masks and a different system to get to perfect, but you can reduce it significantly, 50, 60, 70% of the numbers, and this is based on what's happened in Europe, who's in much better shape than we are. They were much more strict on shutting things down. But people at risk, you act like it's a small deal. Everybody over 65, everybody who has obesity, everybody has COPD, asthma, heart issues. Those are all people who are highly at risk, and that and what COVID does, it, because you're compromised, it attacks those issues, and it is COVID that kills you. It's not the the fact that you're diabetic or that you have a heart condition. It's COVID that's killing you. It's a respiratory issue, very easily figured out. Playing with numbers, I learned a long time ago from one of my bosses at 3M, I said, said, figures never lie, but liars always figure. So, you know, we keep playing with it, and I just, it gets very discouraging to try to figure out what the truth really is, but I'm like the rest of the folks, most of them, I kind of go with the CDC, although when they start to waffle, like, well, it's really not COVID only, you know, the implications, COVID only killed, I even forget the number, 9,000, 10,000. The rest of them were all, they had all these complicating factors. Well, a lot of people have these complicating factors, so there's a lot of us at risk. The point about your rights is, I, when, my right is more important than protecting someone else. I really have to, have to, I would have to question my own heart at that point. The behavior of the person at the bakery, I feel very sorry and really feel badly for that, those employees, but the issue is the person who misbehaved, the 50-year-old man, that's the issue. We, that's what we need to deal with, are people who cannot manage themselves, who cannot resist beating up someone because they're pissed off about something. Pardon my French. I'm I probably don't feel, I am, I am a little bit concerned about some of the wording. There were some points that were brought up about how we need to clean that up a little bit. So I'm okay with with waiting another two weeks on this, but I think it's not whether we have it, but what, how does it read? Can we do anything relative to punishment that takes the onus off the owners? I don't like seeing that being pushed on them totally. So, but they are the ones that that can or cannot enforce that. I've also had the opportunity in the last four months to spend a lot of time at Mayo, not necessarily all of it pleasant, and everybody that goes into Mayo, and I've been there several times, wears a mask. You're required to wear a mask. They check your temperature going in, you wear a mask. I never saw a single person, all the times I've been there, all the hours that I spent, who did not have a mask on. I talked to, I spent my time with some of the people that I became kind of, you know, friends, you can be friends with, people who are taking care of you, but asked them about masks, and they, they're all very, very positive. All those people who are wearing masks 20, 12 hours, they were, most of them were working 12 hours a day, were very positive about the effect. It's, one of them said, you know, who has the lowest sick rate, sickness rate? Those are nurses. I said, we wear masks all the time. And I talked to doctors, said, yeah, absolutely. Said the mask is, in this case, is to protect you. Some of the really good stuff protects me. So I think that's the whole mask thing is a, is a, is a false lead, designed to confuse the issue, and it isn't, and they aren't perfect, and there certainly aren't enough of the of the good masks and good equipment for all of us to have it, but we can have some stuff that's not as good, and it protects a lot of people, reduces the amount of virus that we might spread. So I guess that's the, that's the end of my story.
All right.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would motion to table Alderperson Morissette's motion in the interest of having a couple more weeks to work on the ordinance, and I think it's important to get right. I think the community we heard from tonight needs to be heard, and we need to, we need to get it right. But I think it would behoove us to take those two weeks to really do some better language, and also think about a lot of the sort of testimony we heard tonight, too. So I would move to table the motion.
Paul, we are, we have a motion, a second on the table. It's inappropriate right now to to entertain a motion to table, so we will dispense with the motion. We'll have a vote on it in a moment. First of all-
Why is it inappropriate to move to table?
Because you can't, the motion to table is not, not interrupt, it cannot interrupt an existing motion.
Okay, so my bad. Sorry. Thank you.
Can you actually read the motion as it was stated?
Can, can, are you going to be taking a vote?
Yeah, but no, I'm going to make-
Becky, do you have it, or do you want me to read it?
Becky, do you have it?
I just, what do I have up here? Hang on. Motion to not recommend the ordinance not to pass the ordinance and the resolution, and I'm seconded.
Randy, can you read what you read?
Who? Me?
Becky.
Yeah, I moved that, I moved that we do not take, do we deny, or what did I say? Not approve the ordinance 15-20 or Resolution 1620.
What's, what's important to note in that motion is that it's denying both the involuntary encouraging of wearing a mask as well as the ordinance.
Yeah, well, I mean, but but the the ordinance or the edict is still in place until the 28th. So there are a couple things that I wanted to say here tonight. First of all, I, I mean, there was a lot of ground covered. There's an awful lot that could be unwrapped on this. My take on this is originally, a lot of the, a lot of the restrictions that were put in place, it was all about trying to keep pressure off our healthcare facilities, and that's what we heard. We heard it constantly. We, we need to put measures in place that are going to restrict people's movement, people's actions, so that we can keep pressure off our healthcare facilities. Clearly, we have not had in St. Croix County, as well as pretty much throughout the entire state of Wisconsin, any pressure on our facilities that has denied anybody attention, healthcare attention that needed it, has not denied anybody a ventilator, and in fact, it's my understanding that nobody in the country has been denied a ventilator. So all of a sudden, the goalposts get moved, and and I, I'm pretty sensitive to that. I don't particularly like that. We have not seen come to fruition the concerns that people had about the pressure on our healthcare facilities, and that gets right down to, is there really a state of emergency here? We talked about the deaths in the county. We all don't like to see people die. It was stated earlier by one of the doctors here that said, everybody dies. I guess so. I agree with you, Paul. We, we don't want people dying prematurely. I think what was not mentioned here was that, I believe it's five of the seven deaths in the county were actually people that were already in hospice, and I think that that needs to be put into perspective here to figure into the equation of the number of people that, and percentage of people, that have actually died from COVID here in St. Croix County. The numbers are pretty, speak for themselves. They're fractions of a percent, the total number of people that have actually tested positive relative to the total population of the county, the fraction of people that have died relative to the total number of people in the county. These are, these are fractions of a percent. Now, does that mean it's that we can dismiss that? No, but does it mean that it rises to the level of declaring a state of emergency here in the county, or a city, rather? Well, even even though the county has yet to do that. You're right, Jim, the tests, the number of testing or positive tests has gone up, but that's for a good reason as well. Those testing kits were being held back for people early on. First of all, we didn't have enough of them or a lot of them to be able to test the way we are testing today, and we weren't testing probables at the beginning or the outset of this. We were testing just those people that had severe indications, and so I would expect that the percentage of positives is going to go up, but at the same time, the percentage of positives in the county is still a fraction of 1%. So we need to keep this all into perspective because what we're talking about doing here tonight is an extraordinary event that should be mandated by extraordinary circumstances, and I just don't see that here. This is, it is a, an extreme measure, and I don't think it's warranted at this time, and clearly, the county doesn't believe it's warranted at this time because they have the Health Department, as Bill pointed out eloquently. They're the ones that are the experts on healthcare, not us. We don't have a department for healthcare. We don't have a director. They do at the county, and they have yet to declare a state of emergency They do at the county and they have yet to declare a state of emergency and require anything extraordinary, uh, from the residents of the county itself. I would rely on them. I think Bill is right. If, if anybody's going to be, should be doing this, it's the people that are most qualified to be even considering this type of measure and that's the county, not us. If the county takes it up and fails to do something at, at some point in time, perhaps we should then consider a state of emergency here, but those numbers, again, in my opinion, need to be a lot greater than what they are now to be invoking that type of extraordinary, extreme measure that, I don't know, I, I don't recall it ever happening since I've lived here over the last 20 years in the city or the county. So anyway, those are my comments. I know that, um, that Kathy also has something she'd like to say.
Well, I just wanted to comment on some, uh, some of the legal issues and the concerns. And one of them, and the main one is, um, is there an emergency? And the 323.11 talks about an emergency as a disaster or an imminent threat of a disaster that impairs transportation, food or fuel supplies, medical care, fire, health or police protection or other critical systems of the local unit of government. The county information on the number of deaths and that there's only one person in a hospital within the county, uh, I think you would have a hard time supporting an emerg, the declaration of emergency. And that is a prerequisite to, um, instituting some of these measures, including a face covering ordinance. I, one thing the, uh, Wisconsin Supreme Court stated in its May 15th decision is there needs to be a factual basis for the emergency declaration, um, in order to exercise these extreme powers. And I have concerns that that factual basis is not present here in St. Croix County. And that's the area, actually the city of Hudson, that you're legislating for. So that's a concern. Um, on the constitutional issues, I, I have not found case law on it, but, um, a person's medical care or medical decisions as to how to care for themselves and members of their family, um, could be included in a right to privacy that has been recognized by the, um, US Constitution and the US Supreme Court. So there are issues, there just haven't been litigated, um, at this point, at least with respect to mask ordinances, to a final decision because it's relatively new, at least in this time period. But my main concern is, um, in order to even exercise this authority, you have to have a sound basis for declaring an emergency. And again, I, I, I think the facts are weak. And also, as, uh, Mayor O'Connor said, the fact that the health department for St. Croix County has not taken that step is significant. So those are my comments.
All right. One other thing I'd like to say is that before we vote on this, uh, a vote to turn this down tonight does not preclude-
Is this still open to any kind of public comment? This is Celeste Carballo, I'd like-
No, 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 Celeste, Celeste, we're not at this time. So, um, a vote on this, if this were to, if this motion were to pass, does not preclude somebody to come back with language, as Paul was talking about, or Sarah, that might come back with a strongly worded suggestion to businesses and to people in, in town. Uh, just keep that in mind, um, as we approach the Governor Evers deadline. All right, so-
Mr. Mayor-
Yep, yep, Paul.
Just a couple of thoughts, I, and I appreciate our attorney weighing in, but I think we have made way, way too big of a deal out of a legal term called declaring a state of emergency. And let me tell you why I think that. The President of the United States, in March 13th, declared a national state of emergency. That was before COVID even was hitting. We were just getting the first cases of it. The state of Wisconsin declared a state of emergency and St. Croix County has declared one. I believe they declared two because they had flooding later in June, but their original one was for COVID. And our neighboring city, the village of North Hudson, declared a state of emergency. We are way, way late to the game on this one. We're living in a country and in a state and in a county that have all declared a state of emergency. So I just have to differ with our lawyer on this one. Uh, respect you, but-
May I make a-
We can argue, we can argue over numbers, but it's-
No, I'm not going to argue over numbers.
-has been out there for months.
Correct. But the facts, at the beginning, there were a lot of facts that were unknown and the facts have changed. So you have to look at the facts that we presently have. And I do believe-
I'm looking at the facts and I, I know that we can differ on this and I totally respect that. Anything over 500 cases in the county, in my mind in May, was always, was always going to be the tipping point. Any, any deaths, over five deaths in St. Croix County, in my mind in May, was going to be the tipping point. So I've tipped and I understand that people can disagree over that. I get that. But if our local government doesn't protect its people, who's going to? The state is not doing it. The federal government's not doing it and the county's not doing it. We are the only ones. We have been past the buck and we got to do something. So I get we can disagree on numbers, totally respect that, but for me, not only are the numbers there, we're living in a geographic region that's technically in a state of emergency based on three different governmental entities above us.
Well, I, I for one, Paul, disagreed with, I mean, the numbers that you put out there are important to you, but they are arbitrary. Uh, I think anything that is in fractions of 1% is, does not rise to the level of declaring a state of emergency. I can't speak to, uh, the states of emergency that were imposed by North Hudson that I guess I wasn't even aware of. I was aware the county had imposed one, but what did they do with it? What did they do? They haven't done anything. And we're still waiting on the health department from the county to do something, but we're going to preempt them because we're so much smarter than they are because we've got no health department.
Mr. Mayor?
I think we need-
I would, excuse me, Paul, I would disagree that it's the health department of St. Croix County that we're waiting for action on. It's the county board.
Yes.
Not the health department.
I think what we're waiting for from the county board is to, is to take up the same language that they had in Pierce County. I think that the health department, I could be absolutely wrong on this, but I think the health department still has extraordinary powers in this, uh, in, in, uh, in the certain, certain circumstances that we have.
Yes, but they've, they're not choosing to exercise any of it.
Right.
I've heard, they're waiting for the board to give them the go-ahead.
Well, I don't think that they need to-
The issue is that it's, it's been stuck in a committee that, um, isn't-
What's stuck in committee, what's stuck in committee, Joyce, is my, my understanding is the language that's coming out of Pierce County that creates the, more or less a health czar down there. All right, we've got a motion, a second on the, on the table. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Roll call.
There's a roll call requested.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZeele?
No.
Weber?
No.
Atkins Hoggit?
Yes.
And Hall?
Mayor votes aye. Motion, the motion prevails. I beg your pardon, Paul?
I would move to adjourn it this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We got a motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved. We stand adjourned and thank you, everybody, for all the council members, for a long night and everybody that was here.